Okay, good evening. I would like to call to order our City Council's special meeting. Oh, we have a, sorry. Tuesday, July 12th, 2022, at 5:30 PM. I will have our city clerk do our roll call.
I didn't get the roll call. Mayor Kayleigh Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
All right, thank you. And we did give Kent a call. It might be the time discrepancy, so hopefully he's on his way. And Deputy Mayor Lamb, if you'll do our Pledge of Allegiance, please. Next, I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
All right, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We do have a quorum, correct? Yes, of four. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, by 5-0, our agenda has been approved. 4-0, sorry, thank you. 4-0, our agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to public comments. So I believe we have one in the room. You can go ahead and get started, and then we'll move to those online, if there's any. So is it Dinesh?
No, I didn't have a comment.
Oh. Never mind, okay. Glad you're here. Thank you for signing in. Yeah. Next, we will move to Zoom, if anyone's on.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For those attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. I see that we have four hands raised. I will transfer those callers in the order that they have raised their hand.
Hi, good evening, City Council, staff, and public. My name is Carrie Bosworth, and I'm a Samamish resident of four years. You are about to conduct some interviews for some great candidates this evening, and I wanted to express my support for Roisin O'Farrell, who I first met virtually over the years, and in person more recently. She has consistently promotes the positive aspects and opportunities in the community, and it's been a pleasure getting to know her. With her past experience with the Planning Commission and familiarity with our comprehensive plan, TDRs, and other topics, I think she'd be a great addition to City Council. If selected, I would miss her, working with her on the Planning Commission. I would also like to take a moment to thank another applicant whom I met many years ago at a Samamish event, Rituja Indapure. She was very kind with her time, considering she was speaking later that evening, and encouraged me to get involved in boards and commissions. In that moment, I recall thinking, wow, that sounds like a lot of work. And it has been, but I'm very grateful for the invitation and experiences that have come with getting involved. Good luck with your selection, and have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
You're muted.
Thank you very much for giving this opportunity for me to speak. My name is Nalish Sethi Narayanan, and I live near Southeast 24th Street in Samamish. I'm a 15-year-old and a part of the organization Sustainability Ambassadors, which strives to rapidly advance a sustainable future. Our world is undergoing a systemic paradigm shift due to climate change caused by human activities, sending more and more greenhouse gases into our atmosphere and ultimately causing what is not global warming, but rather global weirding, as the part of very weather and posed dangers to individuals, as it did to myself at a young age, constantly exposing me to exhaust fumes from cars while I walked along 228th Street with my family while walking home. Alas, I can only imagine its repercussions if people with corollarys were exposed consistently to the same conditions. However, my membership as Sustainability Ambassadors has given me a voice and has shown me the importance of environmental stewardship and taking care of our environment so that the future meets their needs. But shouldn't we advance, as a city, our current conditions for the sake of our most vulnerable and future children? We have all seen the strength and ability of Samamish to deliver on this hope and imperative through climate action legislation such as the 2011 Sustainability Master Plan, making efforts to our environmental sustainability. But I believe we can continue this effort to advance sustainability in Samamish and go much further. Today, we are here to discuss a 2024 Comprehensive Plan update to include parts such as the climate change mitigation and reliance element. In our current comprehensive plan, Goal EC 1.6 states that one of Samamish's priorities is to promote and lead public education and involvement programs to raise awareness about environmental issues. However, Samamish should further its efforts in involving citizens pertaining to climate action. We ask that you develop a climate dashboard on the city website by joining the Eastside Climate Challenge, allowing for an interactive way to meet climate commitments and goals. We also urge you to conduct climate audits so we can benchmark our current conditions and see whether our city is making progress towards this future, involving city boards such as the proposed Environmental Board or town halls pertaining to climate action. As we implement actions to address climate change, our city will gain the benefits of cleaner air, less asthma, and green jobs, just to name a few. I urge the City Council to develop and collaborate with diverse groups on such efforts to advance a more sustainable future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I will now promote the next caller.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Anika Kallagotla, and I've lived in Samamish for over 10 years. I'm a rising senior at Skyline High School and a member of Sustainability Ambassadors, which is a student-led organization that aims to rapidly advance a sustainable future. Through the work we do at Sustainability Ambassadors, I've gotten the opportunity to truly understand the importance and urgency of environmental conservation. It is my belief that we have a moral obligation to future generations to preserve this planet's natural resources and beauty, an initiative that can only be made possible with the help of policymakers like you. I'd like to thank you for all your hard work on the Sustainability Master Plan and for taking the big step of starting to work towards a climate action plan. I'm so glad that Samamish is making an effort to improve its sustainability. However, in comparison to cities like Issaquah, Kirkland, and Redmond, Samamish's sustainability strategy is incredibly underdeveloped. It is clear that Samamish has the capacity to be a leader in environmental conservation. After all, we were named the best small city in America two years in a row. At the moment, however, we appear as bystanders to the ongoing climate crisis. One of today's agenda items is deciding which discretionary items to include in the 2024 Comprehensive Plan update. Some of these items, like the inclusion of a climate change mitigation and reliance element, are a step in the right direction. Overall, however, I found that the Environmental Health and Protection Section of the Comprehensive Plan uses vague terminology such as improve, increase, and encourage that make its policies very difficult to quantify. What we need instead is a climate action plan, a detailed measurable framework for reducing our city's carbon emissions. The implementation of a climate action plan would bring benefits such as clean air, lower energy costs, and easier transportation, improving the quality of life of all Samamish residents. As the future generation that will face the repercussions of climate change, it is crucial that our voices are heard regularly in the development of such a plan. We urge the City Council to frequently seek student opinions through public forums or youth environmental board. Most importantly, we ask that the council develop a climate action plan as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now promote the next caller. This is a phone call person, caller.
Hi, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Arushi Agarwal, and I live near Skyline High School, where I'll be attending as a sophomore this coming school year. I'm also, like Nalish and Anika, a member of the Samamish team at Sustainability Ambassadors, a youth-centered organization committed to rapidly advancing a sustainable future. Sustainability is a topic becoming increasingly prevalent in our world, and with events threatening the stability of each of the sectors of sustainability, environment, economy, and equity, it is important that we take necessary action to address this issue. Being part of ambassadors has allowed me to explore the depth and complexity of sustainability, helping me to grasp the cruciality of the problem, and I believe Samamish has the ability to take lead in addressing the change that needs to be made. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for your past work in creating the Environment and Conservation Sections of the Comprehensive Plan, which lays out the beginnings of a roadmap to reach environmental balance. However, much of the language in this plan is vague and often not quantifiable, using words like encourage and promote, making it difficult to measure progress within each policy. I think we've all started feeling the direct impacts of climate change, and with more frequent change in weather patterns and the heat wave last year, which surpassed any temperature recorded in this area prior. Sitting in my house with 10 fans pointed toward me, unable to make a difference in the suffocating heat without an air conditioner, felt like the end of the world to me, but within the same week, there were 100 heat-related deaths recorded and a rise in illness and heat impact across the population. Now is the time to act on this climate crisis. We need a climate action plan, a measurable, definite, and detailed framework focusing on the reduction of our city's carbon emissions. Issaquah has one, Kirkland has one, Redmond has one, Newcastle has one. So why don't we? And as we implement actions to address climate change, it also brings other benefits such as cleaner air, reduction in health issues, lower energy costs, efficient transportation, and a surge in green jobs. We will continue to focus on actions we can take as individuals to reduce the impacts of climate change, but we will need the support and involvement from our city as well. We urge the council to develop a construction of a climate action plan for the future and for the generations to come. Thank you.
Phone caller, are you able to unmute?
Hi, this is Mary Victor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
I sent in, so Mary Victor, I've been in Samamish 20 years. I had sent in an email about please support TDRs, Transfer of Development Rights. It had actually been written up and approved as a docket item in 2020, and it was supposed to happen that spring, right before COVID happened. And the TDR program, Transfer Development Rights Program, is active. You're going to hear about it from staff tonight. And we would like to have it, especially at the same time that you're working on critical areas, because there can be in-city TDRs that can aid not only in preserving areas but also protecting environmentally sensitive or critical areas that really aren't buildable and shouldn't be buildable. There are some corrections that need to happen for sending sites so that they're more clear. It's not just erosion hazards, but also landslide hazards and actually should be geologically hazardous areas, as well as other appropriate places in the city. And I think you should use net density calculations, because the city adopted net density in 2005. So if you have a very large parcel that's highly constrained, it might be 10 acres, but if you can really only build one house on it under an RUE, it's very constraining. You shouldn't be getting a ton of credits for trading that one in. And then the Growth Management Act actually says TDRs are also good to use, and I put that quote in, so I won't read it here. And then finally, just because we had so many students speaking on climate change, TDRs can actually help us work to not increase climate change impacts, and it can reduce greenhouse gases. Basically, a TDR exchange can reduce climate warming CO2 emissions by about 270 metric tons over 30 years, which represents half of the average emissions from one U.S. resident for the same period. That's for a single TDR exchange. And also, TDRs achieve their greatest potential for reducing greenhouse gases when a rural or ex-urban landowner sells the right to build a single-family home, and then a developer in the urban core area purchased that right to increase floor space in multifamily housing. So I think you'll give full support to TDRs. And then just you have a large number of items that are gargantuan importance. The 2024 Comprehensive Plan, if you're not in the Comprehensive Plan, it's the guiding light. It needs to be done, done well. Please support whatever you can for that in budget, people, staff, and topics. For the Critical Areas Ordinance, we've been waiting years and years for it. In the scope of work, we really need to get those things updated, because we've needed changes for years, and it's finally time to do it. And like I said, it couples with the TDRs. And then in Phase 3 Development Regulations Update, there is a little thing on septics. We have 3,500 septics, which is 17% of Samamish. We're still building by new septics in old legacy areas, and failing septics aren't getting addressed. And right now, Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District is doing their wastewater comprehensive plan, which was done in 2003, 2013, and they're making policy decisions on what to do. So it is so important that the city would work with the water district to be able to do this, and that's all I have time for. Good luck for a very good meeting.
We have one more caller that I'm going to transfer, and then we have one in-person public commenter.
Thank you so much for your opportunity to be able to talk over here. I raise in support of one of the candidates for City Hall. Her name is Rituja Indapure, and I'd like to spend a couple of minutes talking about her and her involvement in the community. Rituja Indapure is an experienced leader in the community. She has been very committed to Samamish and has been passionate about the issues that we face as a community, as a city, and to see how we can improve the way of life and resolve issues and problems that we might have, or we might look ahead in the future for the city. She has been an advocate for women's education. She has been an advocate for equality and equity. She is a veteran when it comes to social engagement. I have learned a lot from her about social engagement. She has been an ambassador of the United Way and has been on boards on ethnic as well as global organizations across the board. She's also been involved in many PTA roles, and it is thus a cinch for me to think that she would make a great addition into the City Council for Samamish and help usher it into the future. To that, I would like to request you for your support and your consideration to elevate her as a member of the City Council for the City of Samamish. I always say that, you know, the City of Samamish is, can, is the state where it can literally be the shining city on the hill. We need leaders who have that, who have that passion in their mind and their hearts, and it's great to see the City Council coming to that. And I would like to add that Rituja Indapure would be a great addition to that group. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions in the remaining time that is there. Otherwise, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so we have one in-house, and Councilmember Trine is on his way.
Had to raise that up for me. I like that. James Eason, Samamish, Washington. Thanks for all the candidates. You guys are truly brave souls for being here. I did mention to the City Council in an email that I think the one biggest qualification I think we're leaving out in this process is the amount of time necessary to do their job, and I don't know if it's proper for them to tell you how much time they put into it, but I will. So both Trine and, or not Trine, Gamblin and Mauchow, I mean, really, that's the reason they quit, is because they didn't have the time, they felt necessary to dedicate to the job. So please let them know that you have the time available to do this job. It's way more than you think, and it's thankless, and thank you guys for even being here to put your names on the hat for position. With that said, there's an old adage which says, "Don't shoot the messenger." So back then, there was kings of old, and they all had messengers, and they would bring them the information of what was going on, especially in times of war. And a wise king would take everything into consideration and consider all circumstances, where an unwise, power-hungry king would get upset with what he heard and get rid of the messengers. So as time went on, the replacement messengers would maybe simplify or dumb down the message to make it more towards what the king would want to hear, and then the king would in turn make decisions, which probably were the best decisions based off of omitted facts or findings or softened message. So here in Samamish, the city staff, I'm going to say, is the messengers. And if you look at our turnover over the last four years, it's, I think every major department's been turned over at least once. General turnover is probably 20 to 30%, I'm guessing, even maybe even higher. There's a huge staffing shortage, and we've clearly shot the messenger, whether we like to or not. I mean, City Council or City Managers, we've been through who knows how many, but the message that we're giving them is, hey, we don't like this information, so we're either going to can you, or you can quit, or you need to dumb it down. So it's not politically incorrect, which really doesn't align with the transparency message that we're all asking for going forward. So we've already had pleas tonight to maybe add a little bit more bite to some of the stuff in the packet. I would echo the same message as the TDRs. I mean, it's, should be a very successful program, but it's a mess, because we've omitted so much stuff, we're afraid to talk about it. The 20, I mean, who knows when those are actually going to be used, if ever. The net versus gross, we need to incentivize it. We're playing Russian roulette with the state. Every year, we send a letter saying, please, let us handle our own business, don't make us grow.
Thank you so much.
In areas we don't want to. So we really got to get these packets right by rebuilding trust with city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we are good, both online and in the room. Okay, so next, we have interviews. Not that anyone's waiting for that. So welcome, everyone. Thank you so much. First, we are going to start with, I believe it's a two-minute introduction, and I think we're moving from my left to right for the introductions, and then drawing out of the hat? Cool. So Roisin, you'll be up, and we're going to the podium, so online, everyone can see. I know we have Ashley online, because she's in even hotter weather somewhere right now, so. But yes, you'll be up at the podium, and then you'll have two minutes for an introduction. We'll do everyone through, and then we'll do the drawing the names out of a box, it looks like, the number for the order.
This is on, right?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, yeah, so it will be right on the podium. You'll be able to see it, too.
Yeah, like right there.
Cool.
My name is Roisin O'Farrell. I have lived in Samamish since 1999, just as we were forming a city. I'm originally from the east coast of Ireland. I studied business. I have a degree from Trinity College Dublin. About 25 years ago, I left Ireland and came to the Pacific Northwest. I did not come with a tech company. I'm the least tech-savvy person you've probably ever met. We came here with green cards and started living in the U District, working minimum wage jobs, and we just worked and worked and worked. Fast forward about 25 years, and here we are, my husband and I and my two children. We live in beautiful Samamish. My professional background is in retail store management. I worked for Gap for many years, and for Limited 2 in Redmond Town Center. I ran a store there. In 2005, I had my second child and then officially stayed home. As a, I never quite sure know what to call myself. I guess it's called a stay-home parent, but I just find that description wholly inadequate, but however, we'll use it for now. While being at home, I have an older son. My son, when he was eight, we discovered he had high functioning autism. He was diagnosed at the University of Washington, and that sent our lives on a completely different trajectory that we had never anticipated. You're left with all kinds of questions about what to do next, and then there's a whole kind of social isolation that you begin to feel. Anyway, spurring from that and to kind of break out of that social isolation I was feeling, in 2016, I approached the city to proclaim World Autism Awareness Day on April 2nd, and the city has done that ever since. 2017, I joined the Planning Commission and was there till 2019, and I'm currently serving on the Planning Commission today. It's been one of the best things I've ever done. I serve on many HOA boards. I'm also on the board of the Samamish YMCA, and I just want to live here long-term, serve my community, and just be as useful as possible. So thank you for tonight.
Great, thank you. And then Ashley, I failed to tell you, I'll have you go last, if that's okay. Cool. All right, Ram.
Well, it's a great honor to be here, to be considered. Most of all, I'm excited, all the candidates that are there here. They have some incredible experiences, so I think you all are fortunate to have this pool of candidates, first of all. I'm Ram Vedalapalli. I have been living in Samamish for over 16 years, and we have raised two boys. Unfortunately, we don't live in the part of the city that our kids go to, the Issaquah or Lake Washington. However, you know, our kids have gone, are going to, have gone through some Kwame School Districts. So in any case, you know, Samamish is a beautiful city that I'm proud to be a resident of, and, you know, as any city or any community, they have to go up and, you know, there will be ups and downs, and at the end of the day, it's all about coming together with the right intent and with the right commitment for the overall, looking at the big picture. I have education. I have a master's degree in mechanical engineering. I have, I've been in a profession as an employer for the last 20-plus years as an entrepreneur. Before that, I have worked for large international organizations. So with that experience of public-private, you know, private experience, I think I bring to the table a variety of experiences from strategy, or communication, or execution. And on the other side of the story is, in addition to professional life, our family believes in community engagement and community contribution. Over the years, we have created a youth organization called Creative Children for Charity that has empowered youth to contribute their time and talent with over 18,000 volunteer hours and raised over $25,000 for the local nonprofits, and that's not only a...
Sorry, Ram, to interrupt. Thank you, yeah.
Thank you. It's not just about...
Oh, no, sorry. Your two minutes is up.
Oh, it's not.
Sorry.
All right.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. All right, Rituja.
Yep, I see the clock. Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, fellow candidates, staff, and guests. My name is Rituja Indapure. I'm a mom, a wife, a daughter, an immigrant, a lawyer, a mentor, an engineering manager, and a community volunteer. Home is Samamish. This is where Dinesh and I raised our kids. It gives me great joy today when I go to the grocery store and see kids from my daughter's age. Girl Scout troops, or the kids from my son's class, whom I coached when they were very young in soccer, and seen them all grown up, some in fact even work alongside with me. 20 years ago, we came to Samamish as very young parents, and today, we are empty nesters. Along the way, I've served on the Arts Commission, Planning Commission, and other nonprofit boards. I've worked on important policy work, like the Urban Forest Plan, the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan, the Small Cell Technology Development Codes, Stormwater, et cetera, during my term on the Planning Commission. As a PTSA board member, I work to ensure that our kids got the best education. Mental health and access to resources was a focus when I was on the advisory board of the Samamish Y. Today, I continue to serve on the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center as advisory board member and chair the Washington State Women's Commission. I have the experience to bring people together and ensure strong community engagement so all voices are heard. I want to contribute to building a more resilient, sustainable, and a stronger Samamish. Samamish is an amazing place to live, and I look forward to protecting all that we love about our community and being a voice for all Samamish residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Lynn.
Wow, that is small. Well, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, my name is Lynn Yang, and Samamish is my hometown. I am a proud graduate of Eastlake High School, and I love this community. It's a true honor to be considered by you for council seat today. I'm going to do something a little bit different. I'm going to answer the favorite book question, because I thought it was really fascinating. And hands down, I'm a student of history, and my favorite book is Team of Rivals by Doris Kearns Goodwin. For those of you who don't know, it's the story of Lincoln and his wisdom in inviting all of his rivals from the Republican nomination onto his cabinet. And the reason I love it is because Lincoln believed that you need the greatest diversity and lived experiences on your team to face the greatest challenges of our time, and that's something I 100% believe in. Some of you may know that I founded the Samamish Youth Board, and I also founded the Samamish Independent, but the truth is, I didn't do any of that alone. I had a team that included community members, former city council members advising me, and of course, an army of youth to help me make those two organizations come to life. And I fostered a culture, all I did was foster a platform and a culture where they can express their views, and I incorporated them into how these two organizations were run. And that means these institutions have lasting value, right? The Youth Board has been going for 21 years and counting, and the Independent is now two years old and going strong. Our city faces an immense set of challenges, and our residents have high expectations that we roll up our sleeves and solve them together. And I value the diversity of views on this council. It makes the council stronger and is the key to building lasting solutions that our constituents expect. So my commitment is that no matter what viewpoint I may have coming into any issue, that I openly foster and value diversity of views from this council and from the public, and I'll take all those viewpoints into account when making decisions so that together, we can push our community forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Treen, he answered the favorite book question, which is really important. All right. Yeah. All right, Jennifer.
I'm a little tall. All right, so hello, everybody. Thank you so much for giving us all the opportunity to interview tonight. My name is Jennifer Coombs, and I am a clinical and culinary nutritionist, a clinical researcher, as well as a yoga instructor that provides both restorative and injury-based yoga services. I run a for-profit business named Essence Health and Research and a 501(c)(3) nonprofit named Project Five. Both businesses provide similar services, but the nonprofit seeks to provide specialized nutrition and yoga services to those who have financial and medical need. I'll also graduate as a doctor next year, specializing in clinical nutrition, and I'll have my residency and research year starting this fall. I've worked with patients with COVID-19, post-in-law COVID, rheumatic and inflammatory diseases, food sensitivities, PTSD, weight and mood issues, high cholesterol, and more. My PTSD research has been presented at the American Nutrition Association Conference, while my research on hyperlipidemia has been published on a pre-print server with my research team and presented in a research symposium on the east coast. I've lived in Samamish on and off since 2013, and I've lived here consistently for over six years. For over half of this time, I've lived in affordable housing. I grew up in Indiana, and I moved here from Arizona in late 2012 with only about $40 to my name, which I don't advise, and really self-made myself to get started. I moved over 20 times in my first five years here, doing any odd job I could imagine, to have a place to live and food to eat. Being able to live in Samamish and stabilize has been important to me, and I've done that through affordable housing and building good relationships with my business work. After a rape case, a serious car accident, and breast biopsies, it was important to me to get back to thriving and moving on with life. As a result of my journey, I've chosen to give back through my nonprofit work and to help people with funding and helping people in need. While my private practice and doctorate keeps me busy, I helped to step into the city council and help make a positive impact. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Sid.
I'm Sid Gupta. I've been a resident of Samamish since 2010, so just over 12 years now. I've been on the Samamish Parks and Recreation Commission since 2015. In that time, I served two years as vice chair and chair each. Since 2014, I've been a native plant steward through the Washington Native Plant Society, including restoration work at Eberet Creek Park and Lower Commons Park. Additionally, I've been on the board for Samamish Friends, a local nonprofit that formed out of the Parks Commission, with a focus on environmental stewardship and community enrichment since 2015. A big part of what we do at Samamish Friends is supporting other groups who may not have their 501(c)(3) status in things like outreach, grants, and, oh, sorry, and website support. Through Samamish Friends, I've co-chaired events like the Barn Dance Fundraiser, which raised money for open space preservation in Samamish, and the Kids Mud Run. Super quick plug, we are doing the Mud Run this year. We do a VAP run. Councilmembers, if you are in town, please consider joining us. I know Councilmember Stewart has done so in the past. Bringing things back around, though, I have spent a considerable amount of time in Samamish volunteering, thousands of hours, doing everything from outreach to leading volunteer events and pulling blackberries, and I've been fortunate enough to be recognized for those efforts. In 2016, I received the Sammy Award for Environmental Stewardship, and in 2018, I was recognized as the Volunteer of the Year for the City of Samamish. And if anyone did see Ranger Rick at Earth Day this year or in pre-COVID years, hello, you may have met me without realizing. So thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to hopefully being selected to serve alongside you on council.
All right, thank you. So Ashley, you'll be up next. I don't know if you have a two-minute timer, if we want to adjust the camera for her. I don't know what's easiest.
It's okay, because I can see the little red light on your mic.
Oh, yeah, sorry. There we go.
No, so then I can, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Are you ready for me? All right. Good evening. I am Ashley Arrington. I'm going to start by just telling you a little bit about myself. I was raised by parents who instilled a deep value for the community. They taught my siblings and I that being involved is the best way to help, and I have the privilege of being a stay-at-home mom. This allows me the ability to donate to not only my passions, but my time as well. I have been on my children's PTSA since they started school. I am on the Arts Commission currently, where I was the chair for the last two years. Six years ago, we moved to the Seattle area, where we sought out the perfect community to make our permanent home, and we chose Samamish. So the future of Samamish is extremely important to me. I believe I bring a skill set that would serve the council well. I'm a good listener. I think it's important that we actively listen to the community, take in this information and consider it while making choices with all the information the council has to make a decision for our community that serves us best now and long-term. I am able to make difficult, sometimes unpopular, decisions. I believe in doing what is right, not what is popular, and I will consider all the information and will be able to vote for the benefit of Samamish. I am certain there are things I will not have a deep knowledge on. However, when I don't know the answer, I know how to research to find the information, to gain the knowledge, to make an informed decision, and I'm not afraid to ask questions. I am caring, empathetic, and passionate person. I truly care about our community and the people who live in it, and I am honored to be considered for this position, and I am ready to make the commitment needed. I hope to be part of the team that takes Samamish into the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next, I believe we're drawing numbers, and so obviously, it will go numerical order for the first question, and if it's all right, I'll start with you, Councilmember Stewart. You can ask the first question, and then we'll just kind of go down the line, and then back, if that works. Cool. Yeah, 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 sorry. Just read that piece of paper.
I can do that.
And you'll do it for the--
I have a hard nail on the first one.
Yes, yeah. You'll just do it for the first candidate, and then Councilmember Howell will do for the next.
You'd like to do one question at a time?
Yeah, I mean, you probably only have to ask it one time. So then she'll do the second question.
Is that the first or the second?
Yeah, just the first, yeah. Oh, Ashley, you are number one. You drew it.
Okay, Ashley, you're number one, and apparently, I am having trouble following directions, but I'm going to ask you the first question. So I don't know that we've met. I'm Councilmember Stewart, and thank you for being here virtually. And let me give you the first question. Is there a time limit on the answers, or?
Yes, thank you. So this is 2 minutes 30 seconds.
All right, so we're gonna, you've got 2 minutes and 30 seconds. Now, do we have Jeopardy music, too, or are we just, okay. All right, are you ready, Ashley? Here we go. I just want everybody, everybody to take a breath, it's all good. What are your top three projects or policies that you want to complete or enact before the end of this term?
Well, I am not unrealistic in how city government works, so I know things take time, but I guess if I had a magic wand, I would love to see major movement on the town center. I believe the town center is 100% needed. I think it will provide Samamish with additional tax dollars that I think will also help us to feel like an actual town and just, instead of just urban sprawl. And hopefully, it will allow us to not have to leave town every time we need something other than a necessity. The second project I would like to see successfully completed is the city manager search. The city staff is the most valuable asset that we have, and I believe that we need a good city manager to help us move forward. The third area I would like to focus on is cultural and recreation programming. While some may think these programs are not a top priority, they add so much to our community. They provide positive activities for individuals and family, they help us learn, they keep us healthy, they bring us together as a community. For the benefit of Samamish, I would like to see, like, an effective and robust plan for culture and recreation that will allow us to keep growing both now and in the future. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, number two, Ram. Okay, so we're doing everything from the podium still, correct? Okay, great. So if you'll step up, and then I guess you probably wouldn't need that question asked again, but let me know if you have clarifying questions.
All right, I'm going to reread the question, just at least once or twice, so everybody's got it. So what are your top three priorities or policies you want to complete or enact before the end of this term?
All right, I think the first one definitely is the town center. How do we move forward? How do we create the right environment for the town center to be completed? So, which provides us with the balance of our commitments to the state and the county, and also to balance growing needs for residents or housing, both affordable and, you know, conventional. And the third thing is, it also provides the retail space, which is very important for our community, because we are spending our dollars outside of the city, which should not be. The more we spend within our city, that is where our tax dollars are in a circular economy. That's what I believe. So town center certainly is one of the most important projects. The second project I would also think about is budget. How do we address our finances, from current sources of revenue to optimizing our spend and seeing what are the opportunities that we can discover to either reduce cost or improve efficiency? There are multiple ways of looking at it. And also, look at what are the opportunities for us to increase our revenue so that we can create better impact to the community. The third aspect that I would love to, I mean, there are so many to start with, but, you know, on a higher priority, not that I'm discarding any other things, but I think transportation is also a pretty key aspect to our growing population. And, you know, it impacts so many things, from environmental impact to our time that we waste, the anxiety it puts on us. There are so many important factors that, impacts that affect individuals and families and communities. So optimizing the transportation needs, understanding what are the public transportation opportunities that we can leverage, or other aspects of it, that would be, that would be my third project. Of course, there are several other areas I would love to talk about, but thank you.
Great, thank you. Number three, Jennifer.
All right, this is Jennifer Gunn, and I feel like we're just getting warmed up now. So, so my question is, what are your thoughts on completing the town center? And I have to say that I'm actually in the middle road on this one. It's one of our most complicated--
I'm sorry. Everyone gets the same question.
Yeah.
Oh, it's the same question.
Yeah, sorry. Ready? So we're gonna, sorry, just to make it clear, so we're gonna, we already got your applications, so we got all your written answers.
Okay, so, am I up?
Yeah, so you're up, and it's the question that we asked to Ashley and to Ram. It'll be, everybody will get to answer this one.
Okay, so just repeat the question.
I'd be happy to. So it's, what are the top three projects or policies you want to complete or enact before the end of this term?
Okay, so my first one was, oh, goodness gracious, I'm freezing right here. So the first three, oh, yes, so affordable housing. So basically, one of the things I want to be able to do here is, I only have, there's only a two-year, two-year term, so I would love to be able to increase the affordable housing units in our already existing housing by basically using our budget to help increase those housing units, rather than trying to focus on the development. That's something that can get done in two years. The third thing is that I would love to increase Habitat for Humanity Housing. It's one of the projects that was really successful here. I would love to see more of it. I think it would help fulfill some of those housing needs that we have, that would either help the low-income or senior housing, many people here, so various places in the city. The third one is actually getting an increase in the city council representatives, basically an increase for all of you. So if I were on the council, I'd be rooting for that as well. Just because I see a city council or a city manager making like $200,000 something year, $200,000 a year, and our city council representatives only make around, what is it, $13,000 a year, $15,000 a year? I think we could do something within our budget to have that increase. And those are the three things I'd like to focus on, I have a whole minute left. And so basically, how I would like to expand on a little bit of those three, because I actually have some time to talk. With the affordable housing, the reason why I want to focus on what we are already doing is because we don't have a lot of money right now. And so I would love, it's one of the, it kind of ties into one of the projects of how do we re, how do we fix our budget and being able to use what we have in a new way? So one of the ways to do that is to restructure how we're looking at projects to create affordable housing. I know that this particular city council actually has affordable housing as your top priority, so I really-- your top priority. So I really, truly feel like if we can restructure our thinking, and even on 2/28th, which I hope I get that question, and being able to do some restructuring there with the schooling, that would be also helpful for the town center. So thank you so much.
Great, thank you. All right, Sid.
So my top three projects or policies, number one, in no particular order, Transportation Master Plan. I don't know what the timeline on that would be, if we could 100% get it done before the end of the abbreviated term, but especially with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan on the horizon, I would love to get as far along on that as we possibly could. I think everyone would agree, traffic is a big concern for a lot of our residents. And for me personally, I would really like to see transit options expanded in Samamish. I don't have a driver's license. I walk, bike, or carpool everywhere. It's not as easy in Samamish as you might imagine, especially, again, with town center on the horizon and all the opportunities and challenges that will provide. And with light rail coming to Redmond, I think transit should be a big focus for us. With the Transportation Master Plan, I think we can put ourselves in a good position as these big projects come to fruition. We can take a step back and really consider our transportation system as a whole, buses, bikes, pedestrian access, and trails alongside our roads. Secondly, I didn't see anything specifically about sustainability in those proposed questions, but I would definitely like to see the city make that a priority. At last week's meeting, and again today, we saw the Sustainability Ambassadors calling for Samamish to develop a climate action plan, following in the steps of cities like Isqwa, Kirkland, and Redmond. That is something I would wholeheartedly support. I was at the Sustainability Summit that the ambassadors put on in Samamish back in 2019, along with Councilmembers Stewart and Howell. And back then, we had conversations about community solar and access to public transit. There are countless ideas that have been floated in sustainability since then, and I think a climate action plan would be a good opportunity to gather everything together and really hold ourselves accountable and take some steps forward. That means, one, measuring impact; two, setting goals for ourselves; and, three, making that data available and easily accessible. Isqwa, for example, has greenhouse gas emission reduction targets set for 2030, 2040, and 2050. And for 2022, they list anticipated actions, including a community climate challenge, developing a climate action webpage, and implementing bike share and carpool programs. So I'd love to see us developing something like that for Samamish as well. And thirdly, I know we're still very early in the process, but I'm very, very eager to see what the preferred master plan for Big Rock Park South would look like. You know, what a gift to our city, the three parcels all together, Beeden Hill Park right there, especially with town center and the Green Spine and all the possibilities there. I think I'm just... I'm really looking forward to that, speaking as a bias of a park commissioner. So, yeah, I could not be more eager to see what that preferred master plan looks like and see what, at the end of public process, and then have that adopted by council. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Rutuja.
So thank you for that question. It was great to go through the work plan that the city has already developed and try to pick the top three projects. So I think, you know, when we think about the council, the goal or the job that council members have is to lay down policy, right? Policy for five, 10, 15. You know, how do we want the city to look like? So with this lens in view, I think some of the things that actually we had started working on the... When I was on the Planning Commission, like the Comprehensive Plan update, I think for me, that would be a really high priority, because when you look at the Comprehensive Plan, this is where you're setting the community's vision for the next 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. And that is an extremely important document where we need to make sure that we're listening to everybody in the community and coming up with a great plan and a vision for our city. The Housing Action Plan, this is, again, something that I know we worked on during the Planning Commission days. And again, listening to people and really understanding where is it, what kind of mix of housing do we want in our community, I think that is very important to me. The other thing I would like to see come to fruition would be the Urban Forest Plan. I think Samamish, we are very fortunate to live in a city with a lot of greenery. We pride... We take pride in our parks, but we also know that we are losing our tree canopy. You know, how do we make sure that we actually execute on the work plan and implement the Urban Forest Plan? I think that is a very high priority for me, because that is why people love living in this city. The other top, again, from a policy perspective, what I'd like to address is the fiscal or the financial sustainability. I know there was a presentation about this last week. I think this is something that we really need to focus on, as, you know, we have so many different factors affecting our city budget. You know, how do we make sure that we're getting people involved into understanding what the city's spending our monies on? You know, the council and the city is entrusted with public funds, and they deserve an answer on knowing where these funds are spent, and how they're spent, and why we can do certain projects, why we cannot, and really spend responsibility responsibly. So again, I commend the city on creating a plan. I think from my community, from a community perspective, the three things that I would love to do is create a tool library. I know we don't have ACE hardware anymore, but there's a concept of a tool library, so would love to do that. Have a citizen academy, and have a hackathon where our community comes up with solutions. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Who's next? Lynn?
Okay, top three things. There's so many issues after following city politics over the last few years. I would say the first one is financial sustainability and budget. That presentation was really illuminating for me, although quite long, but I did sit through the entire thing. And, you know, the city was a shining example of fiscal responsibility up until 2020, where it fell off a cliff. And it's a combination of the pandemic, moratoriums, you know, and we got to fix that, right? I think that is the top priority as the city council, is to make sure that our citizens' money is being well spent, and that we're not running into long-term deficits coming down the pipe. And our citizens are looking to us to make tough choices on where to cut and where to increase taxes. And, you know, my viewpoint going in is tax increases are the last resort. And if we do it, we have to... They have to be progressive, and they have to be temporary, and we have to let folks know why we're doing it, right, and what that money is going to go into. I think folks in Samamish are overall generous, but we can't take that for granted. Given the fact that housing prices have gone up so much, I think people are tapped out from a property tax perspective. So we got to find other sources of revenue. And I think ultimately, our eyes should be on the long-term prize. Fiscal sustainability is achieved through increased economic activity, investments, retail, commercial space, like other cities, right? That is the long-term solution. And once those solutions come online, I would like to see those taxes, if we do increase them. I'd like to see them come back down. I would say the comp plan is next. It's something that's not due until 2024, but most of the work is happening next year. And so this council is going to influence a lot of it. And I want a plan not just to cover the basics, but it has to inspire our community, right? The plan is not only the basic needs, but it's also our values. And for me, I'll be looking to ensure that plan is equitable for all of our communities and our constituents. It's inclusive to the diverse needs of all of our residents. That drives economic opportunity for workers and for youth in particular, and that it's the gold standard of sustainability for our region, right? Those are the things that I'll be looking for as that draft comes into play. Finally, as you heard from our youth, sustainability is a huge issue, so I would want to see a climate action plan. In fact, when we were doing a podcast episode, we were searching for one, and the city didn't have one. And we were shocked by that. And so, you know, this is the biggest issue of our time, and the youth have made the call. We need clear actions to operate sustainability and clear measurable targets for the city to reduce emissions amongst the city and its residents. So those are my top three.
Thank you. Roisin?
Okay, top three projects and policies. Well, I have three items that I'd like to talk about. The first one is about how do we move into the future? I feel like Samamish, to some degree, we've kind of come to a stopping point, to a standstill, at least from a person from the outside looking in. If you're driving around the city, it feels like we've come to a standstill. I think we're at this precipice where we need to move forward and into the future. I think that involves all of us working together on a plan. So, for example, let's take town center. We have a plan, but it was written back in 2008, and it's time for an update. We've done updates to various plans that cities have put together, for example, like our Pro Plan. It's 2022 at this point. It's time for an update to the town center plan. And let's get the data that we need to support that plan. It's all about housing, and it's all about retail and office space up there, but it's also so much more. It's also about protecting our natural space and creating more public spaces for our community, which I really feel community really needs. Given everything we've been through in the last two years, and you can see that with the returns of farmers market to our civic space, that people are in need to get together. As a species, we have a need to be connected with one another, and when we're in isolation, that does not serve us well. So I think one of the things that town center talks about very well is those kind of community meeting spaces and the Green Spine. I'm sure it's not a perfect plan. I'm sure there are things in it we need to change and evolve. There are housing numbers in there that may be fine. It may need to be tweaked, but we need to get the data to support that. And in doing so, then, the second thing that I think that we need is that we need to then go back and look at our work plan. And that's probably going to involve a change to our work plan. I know we've one laid out through the end of this year, but a work plan is, my understanding, is an evolving document, and council has the right to change the work plan whenever they see fit. And I think it's time for that also. The third thing that I'd like to kind of just talk about, when I was on Planning Commission, we came together with a document called Samamish Homegrown, and we presented it. It was a 7-0 unanimous plan that we put together and sent it up to city council. And then there, we talked about the acceptance of regional growth that we must do from the Growth Management Act, but also called for a housing balance. And I'd like to go back and revisit that version of the document and see what we can find from there that we can use and bring forward, because I think we did a lot of very valuable work there with ARC, and we talked to a lot of stakeholders and community leaders when we were putting that plan together. There's a lot of great information that I think is worth revisiting from a city now that we are at a point now where we are ready to move forward. So thank you.
Cool, thank you. All right, so the next round will be another drawing of numbers. And then I will have Councilmember Howell read the question probably at least a couple times, so you guys will all have the same question again. Oh, yeah, no cheating with your number the first time.
You can't be here till midnight.
Ashley, you are number two this time. Okay, so number one, who do we have? Rutuja.
Rutuja, all right. What is the relationship between the Comprehensive Plan and the Samamish Municipal Code?
So firstly, I have to commend for this excellent question. I think this goes to the crux of, again, what does the city council do and what does the city do? So understanding the relationship between municipal code and the Comprehensive Plan is extremely important, and also understanding where they connect and where they're separate. So Comprehensive Plan, as I said earlier as well, it sets forth the policy and the vision and the goal for the city. So the city council is the entity that creates and works on the Comprehensive Plan. It sets forth the policy of how our city should look like, what should be involved in the growth of the city, how should the character look like, what kind of transportation elements do we want, what kinds of parks that we want. And the municipal code is really, how does the city then take that vision and implement it? So what we have written in the Comprehensive Plan, how do you take that and implement? So for example, if you have a tree retention goal that you have in your Comprehensive Plan, how does the city enforce it? And I think the critical part here is, you know, making sure that we are clear enough with how the city should implement the code, because I think that's where we sort of get into trouble, is that the city lays out as one vision, and the implementation looks a little bit different. So that is where we really have to make sure that we are cognizant and deliberate about. The other thing that I want to say is that this, the Comprehensive Plan, does not happen in isolation. Again, you know, when I was on the Planning Commission and we were working on certain elements of the Comprehensive Plan, we heard from different panels. We heard from public. We did surveys. Again, this is going out into the community and understanding how do we see our city going ahead. And then, after public comment is received, you have a public hearing, and then it goes in, and then, you know, we put a recommendation to the city council. The city council goes through another process, and that's when it gets created into an ordinance, which then goes into the municipal code. So there's like a little cycle that happens. And just on a sort of technical side, you know, the municipal code does have a lot more than what the Comprehensive Plan has. Comprehensive Plan has certain mandated elements that we do take into account, but, you know, in a municipal code, you actually have laws about how to do this election, or, you know...
Thank you.
Yep, okay, well, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Ashley, you are next.
Okay.
And Ashley, I'll just read it again, just so it's clear. What is the relationship between the Comprehensive Plan and the Samamish Municipal Code?
Okay, thank you. So my understanding of a Comprehensive Plan is that it's like the centerpiece for local planning efforts. It articulates a series of goals and objectives and policies and actions and standards that are intended to guide the day-to-day decisions of elected officials and local government staff. And I mean, the municipal code drills down the details that allow the city to implement the overall goals of the Comprehensive Plan. So they work hand-in-hand. We're kind of like, they go together, and they're both really important. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I wouldn't have the timer for you. Ram, you're third? Yeah.
Are you good with the question, Ram, or would you like me to read it?
I'm good, thank you. Well, you know, already two candidates have answered, so there's not a lot of things to talk about. But I'm going to correlate to, from a business perspective, the Comprehensive Plan is the strategy, and municipal code is the execution. So when it comes to strategy, there are stakeholders that come into play to share what our vision is. How do we understand each other, or what is that we are looking forward to? And that is what Comprehensive Plan is. And it can cover not only just about transportation, but wishful thinking. What are the things that we really would like to see in five, 10, 15, 20 years from now? So that is what I think about is a Comprehensive Plan or building a strategy for an organization. The municipal code is about execution. Once you have a plan, goals, how do you execute it from? It's fixed. I mean, the rules are fixed. It has rules based. It is implemented. It is execution. It's... What did I write here? The stakeholders are the city staff, our police force, our firefighters, or other agencies that are ensuring that we are monitoring and executing the codes that we have put in place. That's how I look at from, you know, comparison to... And they're interdependent, because the Comprehensive Plan is going to influence the city council to create the right policies that will come on the municipal code. Thank you.
Thank you. Roisin?
Okay, so we have two very important things that goes on in our city. We have the comp plan, and we have the Samamish Municipal Code. So the comp plan is our overarching document. It's our vision statement. It's how we see the city moving forward in the future. It's updated. It was every eight years. Now it's every 10 years. And so you guys are facing the comprehension, the comp plan update for the end of 2024, I believe is the deadline. The comp plan outlines various goals and policies to help achieve that vision. It tackles such topics as the environment, housing, capital facilities, land use. It's made up of two volumes, which deal with both subjects. The first volume sets out the more wider policies and vision, and the second volume goes into those policies in a little bit more detail with more strategies behind it. The Samamish Municipal Code is an organization, organized compilation of the city's ordinances and bylaws. And in the Samamish Municipal Code, there is Title 21, or maybe it's Title 21A now, where we have the Samamish Development Code. And that Samamish Development Code should support the vision of the comp plan. Those documents should work hand-in-hand together. They should not, they should at least not be butting heads with each other. So they should be supporting one another so that the city is moving...
So they should be supporting one another so that the city is moving in one direction at every turn and every stop. And so that's not confusing to everybody that we have this goal, but our regulations require us to do this over here. Can't have that, they need to be moving in tandem together. And that's how I see those documents, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Jennifer?
All right, hello, everybody. If anything, I bring some adventure by going off the cuff last time, so, but this time I have some notes. So, so I'll be honest, I know some themes here, but I had to actually do some research to get the language down in order to express to you that actually understand what's going on here. So, but the Samamish Municipal Code is a compilation of ordinances or legislation that has been approved by the city councils and put into law. We have to follow the municipal code in regards to development. The Samamish Development Code is a specific area of the Samamish Municipal Code that applies to land use, development, and more. This new code package is newly approved, so there's been some new development code approved and put into effect this year. So new development applications need to follow this new development code, while old projects submitted last year before may be able to follow old codes. So that's kind of something that's important to distinguish here. But basically, on the Comprehensive Plan, this could easily be called, in my mind, the Samamish Growth Plan. And it aligns with the Washington State Growth Management Plan and the King County Growth Policies. This plan is where the conversation comes in from the Samamish's character and the way we choose to grow. So that's kind of, each city council kind of distinguishes this differently. We want different character, in a sense of how we move forward. So this is the plan where we look at growth, and we look at the city and the culture we create by our style of growth. And so we've kind of made some changes here, so we're kind of creating a new style of growth now. This plan is periodically reviewed, and I think it's the Comprehensive Plan that is the most malleable from the city council to the city, from each city council to each city council, based on the viewpoints. But at its base, it still has to follow municipal code, and it has to align with the Washington State Growth Management Plan. Changes in the municipal code seem to come from the Samamish Planning Committee and approved by the Samamish City Council. So changes in the Comprehensive Plan would also have to come from the city council. The Comprehensive Plan plays out decision-making for development and how it will be funded, and details of zoning and regulations involved. So I've got a lot more notes here, but kind of the take-home thing in 20 seconds is that basically what we're trying to get at here is that a lot of the argument between one side and the other is about where we're going in a direction. And so we need to be able to be in alignment with the municipal code and the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sid?
The Comprehensive Plan is the guiding document for the city. It's the overarching guiding policy document for Samamish, aggregating other city visions and plans into one cohesive source. The City of Samamish's Comprehensive Plan guides the community desires to balance future development with principles of conservation. The plan guides decisions on eight elements as mandated by the Growth Management Act, or GMA: land use, environment and conservation, housing, transportation, utilities, capital facilities, shoreline, and parks and recreation. Each of these elements receives a dedicated chapter of the Comprehensive Plan with goals and priorities formed to support the collective vision of the future of Samamish. Comprehensive Plans are meant to be living documents, regularly updated to reflect changing circumstances, as Roshin mentioned, I think, every 10 years, up from eight as of 2022. So it's identifying what do we like in the community and what are our concerns about its future? Then, what do we want to be in the future? What's our vision? And then, how do we intend to get there? The municipal code comprises the ordinance of the city. This is everything from dealing with our real estate excise tax, how it's imposed, the tax rate, the use of proceeds, to our criminal code, to even laying out procedures and criteria for the periodic update and amendment process of the Comprehensive Plan. So for example, in our Comp Plan, we have goal P.3, enhance citywide planning for parks, athletic fields, trails, and open space. Under that, we have objective P.3.10, promote safe trail use and safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other trail users. So this is what we'd like to see going forward. These are the things we'd like to work towards, and it maybe provides us a bit of a framework for how we'd like to spend our parks' capital dollars. And then in our municipal code, we have, our implementation, we have 7A.11, trail use. We have our trail system, but what's allowed there? Our municipal code tells us that, for example, no motorized vehicles are allowed on City of Samamish trails, and that violating that counts as a misdemeanor. So that's some of the interplays, I understand. Thanks.
Thank you. Lynn?
It's a tough question to be last, because everyone is, it's an additive answer. Let me think about this a little bit differently, because I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said, because everyone is valid. The way I think about the Comprehensive Plan is that it's this council's legacy, right? Because this is a, these Comp Plans are going on for 20 years, right? So what this council sets, and based on public input, you're gonna see that in 10 years, you're gonna see that in 20 years, long after you leave the council, right? And so, to me, that is the most important thing, and it's actually probably one of the most important things that this council works on. And now, you know, functionally what it is, it's a blueprint, right? It's a vision for the city. It's a blueprint at that moment in time for where you think the city will go. And the code is the, what, the execution, right? It's what the zoning and regulatory changes that make that blueprint come to life. You know, the goal of the Comp Plan is to reflect the desire of our residents. It has to be easy and accessible, easy to understand, easy to read, right? Can't be too much jargon in the Comp Plan, because that's to reflect the resident's will. All the elements from transportation to land use and housing, they need to work together, right, to make that vision come to life. And once the Comp Plan is adopted, you have to tee up and almost immediately make those code changes, because those code changers are gonna enable those Comp Plan elements to come to fruition. And I want to comment a little bit about the politics and the policy behind it, because I think this is very important. It's imperative that the council approves the Comp Plan and as many of those code changes as possible during the same term, in order to avoid gridlock. I also think the Comp Plan should not be changed in interim years, unless there's an actual emergency, right? If you make changes to it all the time, you're basically creating gridlock and inaction. You're destroying the reputation of the city in the eyes of its residents, who worked on that Comp Plan, as well as the businesses who are, you know, developing and creating the city based on what your vision of that city is. So it's almost like the Supreme Court, right? And once that Comp Plan comes into fruition and is passed by the council, it's important that new councils in those interim years respect that precedence and only make changes to the Comp Plan if it's an emergency. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. So that concludes our interview section. And I'll look around, we do have the option to go into executive session to discuss the qualifications. I'll look for head nods if you all would like to do that? Yeah, a couple, okay. So if you don't mind, we will break into executive session to discuss the qualifications of an applicant to elected office pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1H. And this will be for, well, hopefully, we will definitely anticipate action outside of this. So first, we will be doing our ballots for position number two, and then after that would be position number three. So, council, do you think 10 minutes, 15 minutes? 15, 15? So we would be back, help me, Pam, 7:03? 7:03, cool, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I think, just want to share out for those listening online that the clerk's office is tallying as we go, and so we are waiting to see the results of that tally to figure out what the next step will be. So ask for your patience if you're online, and we will be back with you shortly.
All right, that is everybody. So, as you can see, we are a smattering of votes. So next, I will entertain motions from the floor. And I don't know if it's best to stop sharing, I'm not sure. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, I move that we appoint Roshin O'Farrell to position two.
I'll second that. Moving and seconded, would you like to speak to that motion? I don't know, can we speak to these?
Yes.
Yes, yes, please do.
Okay. I will go ahead and speak to that motion then. If I may, first, I just want to say, wow. This was an incredible slate of applicants, and if I may have the point of privilege, please stay involved. Whether you make it onto the council or not, there are so many things we need for our city, so, wow. But, so it was a tough decision, but I think the point was raised multiple times that we are gonna be working on the Comp Plan update for the next 18 months. And the Planning Commission experience will help Roshin hit the ground running in order for us to be able to move that forward quickly, because we do have a lot of work to do and a lot of heavy lifting. So for that reason, I difficulty but excitedly chose Roshin. Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? All's in favor of Roshin for position number two, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, so, okay, we have five now, so 5-0, congratulations, Roshin. We will do your swearing in by our city clerk. And as we're waiting, so for online, we will do Roshin's swearing in. She will move to the dais, and then we have a choice to go back into executive session to give you a moment, and all of us to discuss qualifications for position three.
Great, thank you. Could you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, Roshin O'Farrell.
Aye, Roshin O'Farrell.
Having been duly elected to the office of?
Have been duly elected to the office of?
City of Samamish, council position number two.
City of Samamish, council position number two.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially?
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially?
Perform the duties of my office?
Perform the duties of my office.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability.
I will support and maintain the ordinances?
I will support and maintain the ordinances?
Of the City of Samamish.
Of the City of Samamish.
The laws and constitution of the State of Washington.
The laws and constitutions of the State of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Thank you.
All right, she is signing, and we will wait till she gets to the dais, I believe. Looks like we already have laptops set up, great. All right, well, she gets settled. I guess I can ask Councilmember O'Farrell and the rest of us if you think an executive session would be helpful for the third position?
Sure.
Okay. 10 minutes, I think should suffice, so 7:21, we'll be back. Expecting action for position three, so this executive session, do I need to read the RCW again? Is RCW 42.30.110.1H, qualifications of an applicant to elected office? All right, thank you. All right, council, so same as before, with your position three ballots, so you'll be marking one person.
Mayor, again, if I may, for those that are online, the clerk will tabulate the votes, and once, and that will be shown up on the screen. Once that is done, then council will reengage, once the vote is counted.
Oh, okay. Well, Rituja, I think, obvious, congratulations. I definitely want to take this moment, we now have a vacant Planning Commission position, and if I don't see and if I don't see your applications, I will find you. Please, please stay involved, please consider running next year. We'll have, I think, three positions next year, obviously. I really appreciate your time. After Retuja is sworn in, we will take a 10-minute break, so if you guys could just stay around so we can come chat, that'd be great.
Can everybody hear me? This is the author's office, congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Retuja Indapura, having duly been, have been duly elected to the office of?
I, Retuja Indapura, having been duly elected to the office of?
City of Samamish, city council number three.
City council, council posi, city of Samamish, city council position number three.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office?
Do solemnly swear or, and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by the law to the best of my ability.
I will support and maintain the ordinance of the city of Samamish.
I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Samamish.
The laws and constitution of the state of Washington and the United States of America.
The laws and constitutions of the state of Washington and the United States of America.
Great, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, well, they take a photo op. Let's take a 13-minute break, so 7:40, I think that would work. Thank you. I can start while my Zoom is loading. Okay, so, next, new business. So, we are discussing transfer of development rights, or TDRs, doing a program interview, so David, I'll pass it to you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Clark, members of the council, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. I am joined tonight by Michael Murphy from King County, who's in our audience here. Thank you for joining us, Michael, as well as Kelly Hildy, who is online. We'll be hearing a presentation from King County, providing an overview on the King County TDR program, some general information about TDRs. That will be followed by a more city-specific presentation by Kelly Hildy on the city's TDR program. At that point, the council will be able to ask questions, have dialogue with Mr. Murphy and with Kelly Hildy. However, at any point during the presentation, if there's something you need clarity on, or a question that you would like to have answered that, that can't wait till the, the opportunity for Q and A, please feel free to, to stop and ask the question, because we'd like to make sure to have clarity on any questions around how these programs work, what TDRs, TDRs are, et cetera. With that, I'll turn it over to Michael Murphy. Thank you.
All right.
I need to share screen, so just one sec.
Okay, and I think y'all can hear me without the microphone, I'm not sure if it's on. Okay, very good. So I'll wait for the slide deck to come up. My name's Michael Murphy, everybody calls me Murph. If you hear people talking about Murph, they're at King County, they're probably talking about me. I run the Transfer of Development Rights program at King County. I have several other sort of aspects of my job, one of which is the Department of Natural Resources and Parks liaison for our comp plan update, so I'm working on comp plan policy updates for DNRP at King County. I also play a role in advancing our land conservation initiative, which is a overarching initiative to protect forests, farms, river valleys, open spaces of all kinds in King County within a generation before we lose them to, forever to development. So, and I'll, I'll allude to that in the presentation that I give. And please, Mr. Pyle said so, but if you have questions as I go, I don't mind at all interruptions, and happy to answer as I can. So with that, let's, can I advance here? Next slide, please. The, this did not respond. So, the TDR program, the Transfer of Development Rights program, is essentially a program that seeks to permanently protect open space in rural and resource zones. So, King County plans under the Growth Management Act, we have urban areas of King County, and then rural areas of King County, that's rural residential typically, and then resource zones, which are the agricultural production district, Samamish Valley, the Snoqualmie Valley, Edumclaw Plateau, and we also have a forest zone, which encompasses most of the foothills of the Cascades and forested areas of King County. That's one primary goal of the TDR program, is to permanently protect those areas from additional development. We also then want to direct the development potential that we remove from those areas through the permanent protection, which takes the form of conservation easements. We want to direct that unused development potential to urban areas where infrastructure exists to support higher density development. So it's a way to capture unused development potential and move it through space and time, and direct new growth into urban areas. In every case, the program is voluntary, and it's completely up to landowners if they want to participate, and developers if they want to participate, and those are the two sort of primary actors on either side of the equation, the landowners where the land is protected, and the developers where the transferable development rights, or TDRs, get used. And it's, it operates, you know, we call it a market-based system, it does operate like a market, but there are influencing factors that keep it from being a true market-based system, because regulations play a hand. So, next slide, please. So, I mentioned at the top, we have a land conservation initiative. The categories of land we seek to protect are river valleys, trails, farmland, forests, natural lands. This must be an old graphic, because we don't have parks for people in urban areas, which is a major element of the land conservation initiative, making sure that every community in King County has access to open space. We've done a very thorough analysis of which communities have open space and which don't, and then we've overlaid levels of wealth and levels of health on those, and we are prioritizing getting new open space into areas that don't have it already, and are also unhealthier and, and less affluent. So, we're really focusing on trying to get every community good access to open space, because there are known health benefits to having local open space. The permanent protection we seek is about 65,000 acres, that's a rounded number, of course, and we have a variety of strategies to do that. Fee acquisition, where we purchase the land outright and become the owner of it, and also conservation easements, where we just buy away certain rights and let the land stay in private ownership, and, and managed by private ownership going on. TDR is a very important tool in helping to fund this, and also to ensure that as we protect land, we don't lose the opportunity for housing development and growth, because we need that in this region as well. So, TDR allows the transfer to occur. Next slide, please. This is a simple graphic of how it works. I, I usually start with the open space preservation. We protect a farm that has some development potential remaining. We, and I'll go through this in a little bit more detail, but we're often paying the farmer for the conservation easement that removes the development potential, and what we pay is fair market value for that conservation easement. Then that turns into trans, that, we get the protection, and the county, if we pay for it, then gets transferable development rights in the county's name. Then we can sell those transferable development rights, those TDRs, to urban developers who use them to increase density. They're paying us that money. We get the revenue from the sale, and we funnel it back into more conservation. What the development looks like, that, where TDRs get used, is a wide range from towers in downtown Seattle to an additional single-family lot behind a, an existing home in the White Center neighborhood of unincorporated urban King County. So it's a wide range of where they can be used. Next slide, please. The, the sending areas of King County, this is where TDRs can be created, are, as I said before, rural and resource zones of King County. Mining, industrial, all those are out, but rural and resource zones are sending sites. The receiving sites are urban zones. By default, and by right in King County code, the, the urban receiving sites are unincorporated urban King County. There's relatively little of that left these days. White Center, Skyway, East Federal Way, little pockets here and there outside of Samamish and Issaquah, but those are the default sort of where TDRs can be used by right, and that's in King County code. And then we have agreements with cities, where TDRs can be transferred into cities under an interlocal agreement. We have, I think, five interlocal agreements in place right now. Samamish, Issaquah, Normandy Park, and Seattle are all active. Bellevue is on pause, because the first developer who used the program in Bellevue bought all of the TDRs that were subject to the agreement. And I've shown on this slide, it's a little misleading, I've shown the entire city of Seattle, entire city of Samamish, as potential receiving areas. That's not true at all. In Samamish, for instance, the only eligible receiving area for King County's TDRs is the town center area. Seattle, it's downtown Danny Triangle, South Lake Union. So it's not single-family homes, that's not where we as a county want to direct new higher-density growth, it's, the town center's the urban core of, of cities we work with. So, next slide, please. So there are two ways that the King County TDR program can operate. One, where King County itself is a primary actor, and we call this the TDR bank, or the King County TDR bank. In this model, King County is purchasing at fair market value conservation easements, or fee title, to land that we want to conserve. And the way we set the value for that purchase is by hiring a third-party appraiser, who looks at a property that we want to protect, and they say, if a for-sale sign was going to go up today, what would the number be? And if a for-sale sign was going to go on, go up after the TDR easement were in place, what would the number be then? And that delta sets the price for the conservation easement. If we're going to buy a piece of property in fee, then it's just the first number that sets the basis for the offer that King County makes. So it's fair market value that we pay, and, and development rights associated with a rural residential property are very valuable. So, a 20-acre property that could have four homes might be worth $2 million. If we buy away the rights for three of those homes and leave one, we would pay $1.5 million to that landowner for buying away those three development rights, and they could keep that fourth one and live there. Then we get 15 acres of protection, and they get $1.5 million in their pocket. Those are round, made-up numbers, but it's not that far from the truth these days. So that's, that's how we set the value. Then the King County, after we conduct the conservation transaction, the acquisition of the easement or the fee, then King County takes the transferable development rights that exist. I used an example of a 20-acre property zoned RA5 with four development rights associated with it. The, there are ratios that sometimes boost the number of TDRs that result, but I'm not going to get into that at all today. It's not always a one-to-one transaction, however. I just want to make that point. Anyhow, King County takes ownership of the TDRs, then we can hold them for a time, we sell them to developers. Typically, when the TDR bank is selling them, we sell them to developers within cities, and then we take the revenue, and we use the, the revenue, a small portion to support admin for the program, and the majority of it, we roll into future conservation. Next slide, please. The, rolling it into a future conservation, it's a, the TDR bank funds, the, the revenues from the sale of TDRs, is an important funding source for matching conservation futures funding. So, we can, conservation futures funding that King County spends has a one-to-one match. $100,000 of CFT, conservation futures money, needs $100,000 from somewhere else. TDR and CFT often go together, and it helps us stretch our public dollars further when we have the TDR funding source. And then, the added benefit is that when we've spent that CFT money, instead of spending it and walking away and saying, look at the great thing we did, we get to recoup some of that expenditure, because it results in TDRs that have a value that we get to sell and recoup the expenditure, or recoup the, some of that sales price. So it's a revolving fund of sorts. We do not make up the, if we pay $500,000 for a development right, we do not sell the TDR for $500,000. There are some economics that I'll get into in a little bit. So we lose, it's a diminishing revolving fund, but it is a revolving fund nonetheless. So, and, and really important for matching other sources of funding, like our parks levy and CFT. So, next slide, unless there are questions. So, an example, this is the, the single largest TDR bank protection that we've done, the Snoqualmie Forest, which was, is all of, what, 10 miles roughly that way? It is expansive and close to urban centers. It, it's really not very hard to get to. In 2004, King County floated a bond for $22 million, using CFT as the revenue source to back that bond. We permanently stripped development rights off of about nine, what is it, 990 TDRs, it's roughly 90,000 acres, 89,000 acres and change, permanently removed those development rights, and that created 990 TDRs that we have either sold or are now under contract, and we will recoup almost all of that original expenditure through the future sale of TDRs. So that's far and away the largest single bank sending site that we have. And of course, the land is protected forever. It can, this image is from Google Maps not too long ago, it's still being logged. It's only as, it's protected from development, but can still be used for industrial timber and local source of wood, which it is. Next slide, please. So the, so everything I just talked about was the TDR bank model, where King County is a primary actor in the system. There's also a private model, where King County is merely a facilitator to make sure things go smoothly between private sellers, private landowners, and, and private buyers. Most buyers in the TDR system are private. And in this model, the landowner voluntarily grants a conservation easement to King County at no cost, so no money's changing hands for that part of the transaction. King County issues the landowner a certificate that says, this is worth 10 TDRs, and we put that in the landowner's name, then the landowner can sell those TDRs to a developer who can use them, much in the same way those developers can use TDRs that come from King County's TDR bank. The, we don't set the price in that situation, the landowner sets the price and negotiates it directly with the, with the buyer, and the, typically, the, the private enrollments occur on smaller properties that are smaller in scale, and I think the next slide is an example of one of those, which is a piece of forest, next slide, please. Piece of forest where the forks of the Snoqualmie come together. This happened in 2010. It's 97 acres, there's a home there where the landowner still lives, most of the forest is permanently protected now. The landowners own, steward that land. Seven parcels, six of them can never be developed, and the landowner has, I think, sold most of those TDRs and has others under contract. The largest private site that we have is in the Upper Green River watershed. It was Plum Creek at the time that enrolled it, it was about 45,000 acres of land that was permanently protected with no expenditure from, of public dollars. And Weyerhauser took ownership of the land and the TDRs, they have, they have recouped millions of dollars, I don't have the number in my head right now, but they've recouped millions of dollars that they were never practically going to realize development on those sites anyway, so they were able to boost their revenues, and, and now it's forever going to be working forest. So, next slide, please. So, this is a map that's online, interactive, you can click the dots, and, and get details about each of the green dots, which are the sending sites within King County, and the green, the darker shade of green is the area of those sending sites, the Snoqualmie Forest, the big block in the upper right, and the Upper Green River, Plum Creek enrollment is the, in the lower right, that big block. Most of the sites are much smaller, and you can't see at this scale, but every green dot is But every green dot is a place where TDRs were created. 141 of those, 100 of those, just 101 of those are bank sites. 40 private sites, permanent protection of over 145,000 acres. About 100,000 in the bank and 46,000 from private sites. And then receiving sites, 118 receiving sites. 39 of those have taken TDR bank TDRs. About 1,300 TDRs. And 79 private sites for about 700 TDRs. Seattle looks like a cluster of dots because it is. We've had an agreement with Seattle since 2013, and it has far and away been the, sort of, the predominant source of demand for TDRs in the King County TDR system. So, nobody thought when we set up the agreement that South Lake Union, Downtown, and Denny Triangle would go off like it did. It's been bonkers. So, it's, yeah. Next slide, please. So, sales activity, the bank, we've recouped about $35 million in revenue from selling TDR bank TDRs. About 1.4 of that to a single, on a single deal in Bellevue. Sumamish, so far, 1.7 million. And there's more in the interlocal agreement contemplated that would boost that number. Seattle, we're at just shy of 32 million right now. And we have more deals in the works. In the private market, private sellers, again, the conservation benefit accrues to the people of King County, but the money accrues to the private sellers of TDRs. They've recouped almost $25 million through the, through this system. A lot of that's gone into Seattle, but even more of it's gone into unincorporated urban King County. And in some cases, the, there are a few types of sending, or receiving sites, rather, that can occur in rural areas, but the vast majority of the receiving sites are in urban areas. And too busy to see at this scale on the screen, but each of those links represents where a TDR was created and where it was used. And again, this is all online at kingcounty.gov/tdr. I think I just have a couple more slides. Next slide, please. So, for a TDR program to work, these are the must-haves. First, you've got to have supply. There needs to be land you want to protect, regulations and policies that allow you to do that, and landowners that are willing to sell at least some interest in their property. You need to have demand. There needs to be zoning code that allows for bonus density from TDRs. So the demand is driven by market conditions for development and regulations that allow bonus density to occur. The economics have to be right. You have to be able to pay the landowner enough for them to say yes. Yet, the developers have to be able to get the TDRs cheaply enough for them to say yes. Because if a developer can't make more money than using TDRs than they would without TDRs, they aren't going to use TDRs because it's voluntary, in every case in King County at least. There are some examples nationally where using TDRs is mandatory. We don't have any of those in King County. So, if the economics aren't right, the system falls apart. And the demand drivers are a key part of the, of the economics. And then, the last, the last point up here is the hardest one to pull off. It has to be simple enough for everybody to use. It can't confound you as an elected body so much that you throw your hands up and say, "I can't figure this out. I'm never going to do it." If developers have to spend too much time and money on lawyers to sort through the details, they aren't going to do it. So making it simple is a very important principle. And we do everything we can at King County to facilitate at every step of the way. We've got our system really well dialed in in terms of all the recording that needs to happen and the certificates and the, all the transactional elements we have, we have dialed in at King County. So, so there's that. And then, I think, one more slide, and then the thank you slide. And this slide just is meant to illustrate the importance of that demand piece. And specifically, for cities to, to help drive some of that demand. There's a conversation that's been ongoing for a while at the Peters Sound Regional Council that helps sort of set targets and manage growth in the region about how to expand the sort of uptake of TDR by cities. And at King County, we recognize that it has to work for the city. It has to work for everybody, or else it doesn't work. It has to work for the landowners, has to work for the developers, has to work for the city, both at the elected official level, the planning staff level, and most importantly, at the community level. Because if it doesn't work at the community, then we're not doing something right. So, in every deal that we strike with cities, Sumamish included, in fact, you guys got two times, we have some sort of amenity that we include with the deal. That often takes the form of a signing bonus, where we dish some money to a city right off the bat as a sort of, like I said, like a signing bonus. Sometimes it's a revenue share for the sale. You know, with every sale of TDRs, a portion of the revenue is shared to the city. And then there's a model that would take far too long to explain that has to do with a property tax revenue share that was set up by state legislation in 2011, where a portion of King County's property tax that accrues within the city that would normally go to King County actually goes back to the city in proportion to the number of TDRs taken relative to targets set by PSRC. That's a much longer and more complicated conversation. But the point is that we, King County recognizes that it has to work for cities. And part of that is ensuring that the receiving site communities have amenities that, that help keep the community look and feel and character in keeping with what the city wants and what its residents want. So, and I think that that is it. Let's see, the next slide should probably be a thank you slide. This was actually taken just outside the city at the DNR, some of the DNR land that is part of what y'all call the Emerald Necklace. So, this is not even a mile about that way. So, that's all I've got. Now, I think Kelly's going to come after me. I'm happy to take questions now, or we can wait till after Kelly presents?
The next presentation is on city specifics related to our own TDR program and TDR code. So, it's the council's wish, if you want to ask questions now about the county program or wait and ask commingled questions about the county and the city program.
Yeah, so council, second option, yeah.
All right.
Keep going. Thanks, Murph.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, here we go. Okay, perfect, you see? Presentation. Thumbs up from everyone? Okay, great. Okay, so, good evening, City Council. Tonight, I'll be presenting an overview of the city's transfer development rights program. And we'll be seeking direction from council to help inform the department's 2023 and 2024 work plan and budget. The policy framework for the transfer development rights program was first established through creation of the city's town center plan, which was adopted in 2008. The plan identifies that allowing residential density transfers from outside the town center subarea would better protect ecological resources in open space with public benefits. Such transfers would allow developments in the town center to exceed the allocated residential density and commercial capacity since it would be reducing density and capacity in other parts of the city. In 2011, the city adopted the Town Center Development Regulations. The code allows for TDR credits to be converted and used as bonus residential units or commercial square footage to achieve planned maximum density. This was followed by the adoption of the city's TDR program through the addition of new city code. The TDR program includes both internal and external sending sites with transfers to the city's town center subarea. The initial city TDR program gave priority to internal transfers through density incentives. Shortly after the creation of the TDR program, an interlocal agreement with King County was negotiated and executed. Once the agreement was approved, the city amended the TDR code, which changed the priority of sending sites from internal to external. And in 2019, two applications for development were submitted to the city, which included TDR credits from external sending sites as approved through the city's interlocal agreement with King County. The city's TDR program is described in Sumamish Development Code 2106070 implements a market-based tool to permanently preserve partially developed or undeveloped land with important public benefits through the private acquisition of development rights on those lands, sending sites, and subsequent transfer of those rights to lands for more suitable development receiving sites. Sending sites identified in the city's TDR program include areas located in unincorporated King County and within the city boundary. The receiving site identified in the TDR program is the town center subarea. The city in King County entered into an interlocal agreement that authorizes the transfer of TDR credits from unincorporated King County to the Sumamish Town Center subarea. The purpose of this program is to preserve rural and resource lands deemed important to the city on an ongoing basis while investing in city amenities. The sending site area identified in the interlocal agreement is located adjacent to the city south of State Route 202, north of southeast is Issaquah Falls City Road, and west of 308th Avenue Southeast. This area is also known as the Emerald Necklace. The program is managed by the county, which has adopted policies and regulations and administrative procedures to implement the agreement and to manage the purchase and sale of TDR credits through the use of the TDR bank, as Murph just presented. The county bank facilitates the private TDR market by bridging the time gap between willing sellers and buyers of TDR credits. The county manages 75 TDR credits for use in the town center receiving site. Of these 75 TDR credits, the city agreed that the first 20 would be used prior to accepting TDR credits from any other sending site, including internal transfers pursuant to the TDR conversion ratios established in the receiving site incentive table. One TDR credit from an external sending site will provide a develop, will provide a development in the town center A, B, and C zones an additional 3,500 square feet of commercial space, five bonus units in the TCA zone, three bonus units in the TCB zone, and two bonus units in the TCC zone. To date, 10 external TDR credits have been applied to two applications in the town center. This includes the Town Center Southwest Quadrant UZDP that is currently under review and, and the Brownstone West Preliminary Subdivision, which is approved in May. These TDR credits equate to 38 bonus dwelling units in the town center A1 and C zones. The TDR program also provides an incentive process for property owners within the city to preserve lands with a public benefit and to provide an administrative review process to ensure that TDR credits are evaluated and administered in a fair and timely manner. SDC 2106070 identifies sending site areas within the city, qualification requirements, the certification process, restrictions, limitations, and a description of the TDR transfer process. The sending sites identified in SDC 2106070 include the Thompson and Eaglewood Subasins, the Erosion Hazard Special District Overlay, and the Well and Management Area Special Overlay. One TDR credit from internal sending sites is determined by residential zone of the property. For example, a TDR credit from a sending site that is zoned R1 in the city equates to about 7,700 square feet of commercial space, seven bonus units in the TCB zone, and four bonus units in the TCC zone. And lastly, the TDR program and the town center regulations allow the city council to sell 240 residential density credits from the town center D zone to development in the town center A zone at a one-to-one ratio. For example, 10 dwelling units were purchased from the D zone. They may be used to develop 10 dwelling units in any of the five A zones. Funds from the sale of the TDR density credits can only fund public benefit projects within the town center subarea. Developments that purchase Town Center D residential density credits must also achieve a higher level of design performance than those specifically required in the Town Center Development Regulations. In order to qualify, developments must incorporate, incorporate at least five of the development features listed on the screen. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to read each one of these out, but they can be founded in the code under SDC 2107050. Through enhancement, the TDR program is a tool that could better be used to protect lands within the city that are ecologically valuable, character-defining and otherwise valuable to the public. Unfortunately, through the past development cycle, we have seen significant increase in pressure to develop highly encumbered or ecologically valuable properties that might have been eligible for some level of preservation through internal transfer of development rights with a functional TDR program that offers adequate incentives. With that said, the timing couldn't be better as RCW 3670A130 requires the city to update the Critical Areas Ordinance concurrent with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, which is due in December of 2024. Coincidentally, these topics are also on tonight's agenda. This presents a unique opportunity to consider new city objectives brought forward with the Comprehensive Plan and Critical Areas Ordinance update, including changes to internal and external sending site parameters, incentives, and ratios, receiving site locations, and requirements, as well as overall program application. Tonight, we asked the city council if the Department of Community Development should budget for and schedule review and update of the city's TDR program and the King County TDR interlocal agreement. If directed to do so, this work would occur parallel to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update as well as the Critical Areas Ordinance update with a target TDR program package, code and interlocal agreement, bundled for adoption and approval with other code updates by December 2024. And with that, I am done with the presentation. I will stop sharing my screen so we can take some questions.
All right. Yeah, thank you both. David, do you have anything to add before questions?
No, thank you. We're happy to answer any questions about the programs. I think there's a lot of information here to consider. I think that the main takeaway is that we have a lot of opportunity to fine-tune these programs and make them more useful and talk about how to direct density in the city using some of these tools.
Cool. All right, Councilmember Howe.
And with that, I mean, I'm very much in favor of considering, or reconsidering how we could structure these so that they're truly beneficial for the city going forward. And my question is around the bonus plan because I just am trying, just trying to get it. Can the, is the bonus flexible? Is it something that, as an incentive where the unit exchange, the ratio actually can shift?
So it's codified, and Kelly can jump in here where needed. It's codified, and it is set by sending site and receiving site. So, the way the bonus works is, for the King County ILA, for example, we, the developer would purchase credits. One TDR credit might be anywhere from three to five dwelling units.
Right.
So, it depends on where the receiving site is. So if it's in the TCB, or excuse me, TCA, then there, there's a different ratio than, say, the TCB or TCC.
Okay, and that's clearly communicated. Everybody knows what that is. I mean, like, if it's here, it's this ratio. If it's over there, it's a different ratio.
I wouldn't say it's clearly articulated. However, there is a table in the code. One of the things we could do as a spinoff with the review and possible update of the program is to market it better, is to make sure there's better public information available about the program. And I think that if we were to look at ways to also start to use the internal program to the city, we would want to make sure property owners are aware that that option exists when they're considering selling their property, that maybe they would sell the TDRs and keep one home on a three-acre property that's heavily encumbered by critical areas, for example.
Right, which makes perfect sense. Is there a top limit that we have in our, that we have for how many dwelling units what we currently have available to us represent? Because we aren't maxed out on our, on our TDR, so I guess we can't know that answer. But where are we today? Like, if we were to, how many units is it actually, how many units could we actually build based on TDRs?
So.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I was, manage the mute button here. So it's important to keep in mind that the Town Center has an environmental, a final environmental impact statement that envisioned 1,300 to 2,000 housing units as part of the preferred alternative.
Yes.
If the Town Center was to exceed that number, then it would require a supplemental EIS be done in order to increase the number by however many units incremental. We do have more zoned capacity when considering bonus units and TDR units in the Town Center than the 2,000-unit cap. Kelly, I don't know if you want to correct me on that or provide clarity?
Yeah, no, that's correct. But the environmental review is only 2,000 units, and so, once we look to go over that, there's going to be further environmental study required.
Well, it's interesting that it isn't just held at 2,000 units. I mean, it's just, but it sounds like that's not official limit.
It depends on densities and dimensional standards. If you think about envelopes, how big a building can be, bulk and scale, height, setbacks, those sorts of things.
Okay.
And then the types of units being, being built into those envelopes, that really changes. So if you had a smaller unit being built, you might see many more of them in terms of bulk and scale, and the perceived impact would be relatively similar, because you could have large units being built in buildings and have few of them versus smaller units being built in buildings that have many of them, and the bulk and scale of those buildings remains the same.
Okay. Okay, thank you for walking through that for me.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. So in regards to the ILA with King County, so it's my understanding that it's up to 75, but we need to execute the first 20. When we signed that agreement, we agreed to put our internal TDR program essentially on hold until the first 20 of those were executed. Is that correct?
That's correct. And in addition to that, if you look at the, so in the agenda memo for tonight, there's a history that's laid out where we first adopted the TDR program, then we went into ILA with King County, and then we amended the TDR program to modify application of where internal TDRs might be sent, eliminating the A zone as a receiving site for internal TDRs. So one idea, one reason for that is to ensure that the King County program is successful and that some of the commitments made through the ILA are actually realized. But there might be opportunity for us to look at the balance of how that works, to ensure that the, the King County program is successful, but that we also have opportunity for use of the internal city TDR program. I think there's opportunity to do both.
I agree.
Excellent, which is great, because that, I mean, hopefully, it's no secret to the staff, I'm a huge proponent of the TDR program. I think it's an excellent opportunity, whether it be, you know, for King County, but even for the city, where we've had people come to us and say, like, I really don't want to sell my property to a developer, and yet I still need to get some value out of my property because I really want to retire, or other scenarios. So I think this is a huge opportunity. So I would love for the staff to review our TDR program, to consider additional receiving sites, right? So maybe the Town Center isn't the only place where we could add some additional density. There may be other areas where we could consider that, that would also make sense from a, from an infrastructure, transportation, that type of deal, right? I mean, again, my eye is towards sustainability. And then expand the sending sites to potentially be the entire city. And did I say that backwards? I think I said it right. We want more receiving sites, but only, only good ones. And then expand the sending sites to be pretty much anywhere in the city, as long as it's really land that would truly be able to be developable, right? Like, we want to be very prudent in, in making sure we aren't giving people a TDR for something that they couldn't necessarily develop on to begin with. So I think that's really important, and I think there's been some conversation about making sure we're doing our proper net density calculations, et cetera. So I'm a huge fan of that, and I would love it if we could have a conversation with King County. Yes, we want to see the King County TDR program be successful, but we have some real needs in our city, and so we'd love to know if there are things we could potentially, you know, modify or amend in that agreement so that we could use that internal program. Because I think it's really important at this point. I mean, we, we've heard from folks like Mary Wickter, and Mary took the time a couple of years ago to put together a very well-thought-out request for modification, right, for comp plan amendment with regards to this, because we do have areas in the city that aren't in one of these particular areas, but it still doesn't necessarily make sense for us to continue to allow development there environmentally and from an infrastructure standpoint. So I don't know if you have any comments you can make on what might we be able to modify, but that would be so amazing.
I'm certainly open to the conversation, and I agree with everything you just said in terms of making sure it works for the city. Like I said in my presentation, it has to work for the city, for the receiving site communities and all of that, and absolutely open to having those conversations with staff and with council. I should mention that, of course, I don't get to make the decisions alone, right? It's legislative action, just, just like it is with you all on my council side to amend the ILA. But I know from conversations I have with our regional planning group and the exec branch, folks who touch this stuff, that we want it to work for the cities, and we want it to work for those receiving site communities, so that we can all grow as a region in a responsible way. And then a couple, just a couple bit, a couple notes on, on sending sites. In King County, sending sites are really based on, the eligibility is based on zoning, first, and then conservation value, second, and development potential, that there needs to be some development potential. But even sites that are encumbered by critical areas can send TDRs in many cases, because those critical areas regulations are, in your case, four votes away from being changed. Not that that's going to happen, but they're impermanent, whereas the protection from TDR is a conservation easement that runs with the land and is permanent. So it's a higher level of protection than something that's protected regulatorily. That's up to you guys to decide internally what you want to allow as eligible sending sites. But it, the, I just wanted to offer that note about how it works in King County, and what counts as conservation land. In our system, we look up to the RCWs, and there are definitions in there in 8434. It's the chapter that has to do with tax benefits for current use on land. There are definitions in there about what constitutes conservation land, and those are the definitions that we use, and it's a relatively easy bar to clear for what has public benefit for permanent protection.
Okay, so does, does any TDR program in any city have to have this conservation element to it? Because I look at it, we have a lot, well, not a lot, but we have a fair amount of land that is not fully developed, and that, that, you know, adding, squeezing in that additional development in some of those areas can be very detrimental on a number of levels. So while you might not consider that land conservation land, I think from a sustainability perspective, it can have huge benefits from us being able to, you know, kind of move those development rights somewhere else.
Kelly, it looks like Kelly's about to.
Yeah, I can speak what our current code requires. So to be qualified as a sending site, you need to be within one of those four areas I previously described. Additionally, you, you have to have intact development potential and provide a defined public benefit, which means adjacent to open space, wildlife habitat, for threatened and endangered species located such that the preservation will provide additional protection for sensitive subbasins, environmental critical areas, farmland, forest land, and forest land. Once you meet that, meet those qualifications, we'll go through the certification process, and to get your TDR credit or certificate, for us to hand that over, you need to provide us a conservation easement on the entirety of the property that says you cannot develop that property. And once we have that, we will gladly give you your piece of paper.
Thanks.
Signed, and it's recorded on your title.
That's awesome. I guess my, my question was slightly different. It wasn't so much about what we currently have today, but would there be any, are there any county or state restrictions saying that there, that it has to meet all of those criteria? Because when I think about, like, land that's redevelopable within the city, there may be land, you know, and our, you know, an acre of our four that only has one lot on it. It may not have, you know, bump up against a wildlife corridor or something, but we still don't want somebody cramming three more houses in there.
I can offer one example I know exists, and that's Seattle, that has a TDR, an internal TDR program that is for historic preservation. So there is not, you know, some churches downtown, for instance, have availed themselves of that, sold to towers next door or down the street that got taller because of it. So there's no sort of conservation or open space element there. And final bit of commentary is that the county attorney I work with closely on a lot of this stuff calls TDR fiction. I mean, we made up a lot of these, these rules.
Okay.
And I'm not aware of any state rules outside of some legislation that I mentioned, alluded to before, that there's a really long conversation. That does have a conservation element to it, but otherwise, I'm not aware of any state legislation or RCWs or WAC that requires TDRs to be created only for conservation actions. The, yeah.
I think we could argue public benefit in a number of ways, so I think that's great.
I would concur with that, and I would add that I believe it to be a function of the city's zoning code. So, you know, if, if you're moving density from one area to another area within the city, and you do proper planning, and you do proper environmental review on that, I don't see there to be any restriction on that.
Great. I see lots of other hands, so I know there are more questions, but do you need formal, do we need to provide formal direction on this, or do you just want to hear comments and head nods?
This type of direction is great. What we're doing here, and these four items you'll hear tonight, that are community development items, are really in anticipation of our budgeting cycle we're going through, to make sure that we're properly scoping out items and properly budgeting for them. It's something that we like to do to make sure we get it right. So appreciate the feedback, and definitely want to hear from anyone else. And if there's any follow-up after the meeting for anybody who has further comment after they've had a chance to think through what we talked about tonight, definitely open to it. Please feel free to give Kelly or myself a call. We'd be happy to talk about it.
Great. Well, please do budget to work on this. I think this is really important. Thanks.
Councilmember Intepire?
Thank you. So I do support the TDR program. I think what my question was going to be, I think you said, infrastructure needs to be there to support the development, and what's that definition of infrastructure? So that's my first question. I know there's been a lot of focus on farmland, but I was also wondering if you had examples of maybe horse acres, you know, that kind of being, being, receiving site?
Sending.
Sending site, okay. I'll get it eventually. And then I wanted to know which city in King County has been extremely successful at this program?
Okay, last first. The county in Seattle have cooperated to affect the greatest transfer of TDRs, but that's because downtown Denny Triangle, South Lake Union is a different beast than everything else in King County. So other cities across the county do have internal TDR programs. Redmond Shoreline has one on the books, the Samamish has an internal program on the books, so few examples there. And the, with respect to equestrian uses on properties, some of our farmland easements expressly prohibit commercial equestrian uses, and for those, we pay additional, and some of them don't, and some of our sending sites do have equestrian activities going on. So it's certainly not a deal breaker if a property has equestrian uses on it for, for sending site side of things. And I think, did I get all your questions?
Infrastructure.
Oh, infrastructure, thank you. That's up to the, to the city. I use those terms really loosely in that, you know, generally, infrastructure in urban areas is better equipped to handle higher density development, and by that, I mean sewers and roads and transit and, and proximity to employment centers and so forth, is generally closer and less impactful than if you had a new subdivision out in the middle of the Snoqualmie Forest that would need to have new infrastructure put out there, and some way of dealing with getting water there and getting waste from there, and, or septic systems and so forth. So I use that term loosely. There are specific definitions of what constitutes infrastructure in the state legislation that sets up one type of revenue share, but beyond that, I believe that the city can dictate what adequate infrastructure for receiving communities means.
Yes, that'd be part of our zoning code, and some of the concurrency standards related to development that the city has been discussing at length for many years, so.
Great. Councilmember Trane?
So what would be an example of the scope of review?
Yeah, so what we would do is we would do a complete analysis of the existing code. We would look for opportunities, easy opportunities of updates. Some that immediately stand out are that the sending sites that are referenced use outdated antiquated terminology related to critical areas. You'll hear later tonight regarding our critical areas update that things like wetland management areas have been replaced by NPDS, Stormwater Pollution Prevention, requirements, as well as other wetland standards that are more traditional now that you see, or I guess more contemporary. The, the, so that's an example. Another example is that we have, we'd like to redo our erosion hazard areas and, and some of the geo-hazard areas and redesign that. So definitely would consider what the sending sites look like internal to the city. We would consider where there might be, in collaboration with our comprehensive plan team, if we are looking at housing, there may be opportunities to identify additional receiving sites in some of the existing commercial nodes where we have existing underutilized asphalt. Pine Lake, for example, Inglewood, for example, in Kohani, where there is already asphalt in place, where you could replace that with a redevelopment project and try to incentivize that occurring. That's an example of looking at changing the receiving sites.
So you listed, I'm gonna, I think, three things right there, a scope, maybe there was a fourth in there. So let's just, that's great, I gotcha. So let's just say that that would be the scope, those four items. What would the cost be, or an estimation on the cost?
So right now, I don't know offhand. I would say that it would range somewhere from $30,000 to $50,000 as a budget line item. It's really a code exercise, and we would be utilizing some, utilizing information and taking advantage of the synergy of other efforts that are going on at the same time. So this could be something that is consultant managed, it could be something that is internally managed. It really depends on staff availability. We do have the expertise internally to make these code amendments and run this internally. So we would consider that, definitely.
And final question, what is the time commitment?
The cycle, I believe Kelly had that slide, I don't know if you could pull that up again, Kelly?
Thanks, Kelly.
We're looking at generally overlapping this with the Comprehensive Plan update, so initiating work in '23 and concluding in '24. The ultimate objective would be a code amendment package that would be adopted with the development code updates that would take place at the tail end of the Comprehensive Plan update.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Kelly, for bringing that slide up, and that's all my questions. Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilmember O'Farrell?
I just had some comments. I'm just so pleased to see this item on the agenda and to see TDRs being discussed. It seems like it's a program we've had at the city for a long time, and it's been stagnating for a while. And I do remember even as Planning Commission, receiving public comment from people like Mr. Eastman and the audience, who've come to us many times asking us what's going on with TDRs. I think it's exciting to see a reinvigoration of it and bringing it back to city council to talk about. I take Mike's point about keeping it simple. I think if you're a landowner who's take Mike's point about keeping it simple. I think if you're a landowner who's interested in this program, I think one thing that would really put you off if there's like tons and tons of paperwork, and that you would get bogged down in kind of ifs, buts, and maybes. So I think as simple as we can keep a program like this to make it more user-friendly and make it easier for people to understand how they can use it, what the benefit to them would be, and also broader conservation benefit too, especially if you want to appeal to people's notion of the greater good. So I'm really excited to see this. I hope we can make this a simpler, more usable program. I was grateful to Mary Victor for her comments tonight, too, in using net density. So I just want to get started. So let's go. Thank you.
One additional thing that we want to make sure, as a scope, is we'll be working closely with King County to look at how the ILA works within, interplays with our code. But in addition to that, we have opportunity for King County to serve as the administering agency for our own internal program. They have expertise in that regard. So one thing we could do with updating the ILA is to also include King County as the administering agency for our own internal program. That would be a huge benefit to us. They already do it. They have expertise in it. And so that's something we'll be looking at and trying to compare, what that would look like compared to an internal administration of that type of program.
And if I may, just quickly to tag on, yes, so long as our administrative costs are covered. And again, I don't get to make the decision on my own.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thanks, David. My question is, so we can't do any internal city transfers until the first 20 King County credits are being used, is that correct? And is that detrimental to our own program? And can they just hold on to those credits indefinitely and never use them?
So they can hold on to those credits until they are built, according to the ILA. And built means a building permit issued. That's different than a construction permit, by definition. A construction permit might mean a site development permit where they start moving dirt, putting it in utilities, et cetera. But until a building permit is issued, they're not considered to be used. And that could come several years after a site development permit. So it is something that is seen as holding up the utilization of the balance of the credits. However, I think when, at the time, when that was written into the ILA, there were assurances that were needed to be made. If we're making investments in acquisition of land, King County wanted to make sure that the program would be used. So that was appropriate at the time, although we're in a little bit of a different paradigm now than we were then. So we might want to evaluate whether that's appropriate. And another way to possibly ensure that the program will be used, but also give opportunity for other developers to proceed with projects.
So would we set a timeline or a deadline, excuse me, on using those credits, then?
That would be something we would consider with updating the ILA, in order to make sure that, we want to make it a public process as well, so that anybody who owns them or is concerned about the program would have opportunity to provide feedback. So we'll definitely be looping that into this whole process as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I will make a couple of comments. Only one question. Yes, love the idea of making it more of a, like, public outfit, you know, more outreach on what this program is, what it can do. I'm really excited to see what you guys bring forward. But yes, obviously, I support this program. I'm really looking forward to seeing what you, like I said, what you all come up with. And the ILA from 2011, so that, there's like no expiration, just in perpetuity. So if we made a new one, that's kind of how it would be again, or?
We can discuss and agree on the termination terms. There is a termination clause in there that gives, I think, 180 days to either party to give notice to the other. But the way it reads, I believe, and maybe you could confirm this, is that it runs until, and I'm looking at Kelly, too, it runs until those 75 are used. And I see Kelly nod, so that makes me happy. All right. Yeah.
Yeah.
And of course, we can discuss the terms of any update.
Yeah. Yeah. Great. No, that's great. Thank you all. Council, any more questions before we move to the next? I think you mostly have head nods and direction.
Yes, we really appreciate this direction and the comments. You know, this is something that helps guide us in scoping it out. So we'll get started on that and make sure to have it brought back for the budget process.
Awesome. And thank you, Marv.
Thank you, and congratulations to you both.
All right. So next, 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, Project Scoping. Back to you.
Yeah, thank you. Again, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. Tonight, we have for your consideration some initial work on the comprehensive plan update scope. With us tonight, we have Jeff Arango from Framework. I believe he's being promoted to panelist. We have Kelly Hildy, the Deputy Director for Department of Community Development. And Kelly, do we have anybody else from DCD on this topic tonight?
Yeah, Evan.
Evan.
Joining us.
Evan Maximus, Evan Fisher. Evan Maxim was a prior staff person. Evan Fisher, yes. I believe Jeff Arango will be providing a presentation, and he's probably queuing it up at this point, getting it ready as he's promoted to panelist.
Great. Fantastic. Good evening, City Council. Jeff Arango with Framework. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. Congratulations to the two new council members. Look forward to working with you on this project. So I am the project manager for the consultant team that'll be working with the community on the comprehensive plan update. And we have an initial scope of work that was approved by the council earlier this year. And as David said, we're looking for feedback as we move into the next budget cycle in terms of additional priorities. And so tonight, we have a brief presentation to go over what some of the requirements are from the state and other agencies, some options for the scope of work, and a summary of what we have in there to date. So next slide, please. So this is a chart of our team, led by Framework. We also have a number of subconsultants. Sterling Mountain, Community Planning and Design. Code Studio, who we worked with on the Phase Two development code updates, are on the team for code work as part of this project. Site Story is on the team to lead the public engagement pieces. And then Seager Consultant, consulting to contribute to housing, capital facilities, and the financial analysis. That's part of that work. Next slide, please. So this is the main tasks and the timeline that was in the approved contract. This will be updated once we have a final scope of work. And one of the big changes is we have now to the end of 2024 to complete the work, should we want to add additional six months. The main four tasks include project management, which is, you know, coordinating work with the subconsultants, regular meeting with the city staff team, managing the scope and schedule to make sure we're staying on target. The existing conditions and plan audit, so that's looking at the existing plan, existing conditions for each of the elements that kind of inform the development of the plan and are shared with the community at the engagement event. The public engagement activities, which we'll go through in more detail in a few moments, and the comprehensive plan elements. We do have some optional elements we'd like your input on tonight. Next slide, please. So this is what's called a periodic update. Each city planning under the Growth Management Act is required to do it. Typically, it's been every eight years. It was just recently extended to 10 years. And there's been some other fairly significant legislation, particularly around housing, public engagement as well, that we will need to comply with as part of this process. We need to be consistent with the Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050. We need to be consistent with the King County countywide planning policies, which have been updated and do have some significant new requirements, particularly related to housing. And some of those requirements are still in flux. And then the plan must be completed by the end of 2024 to be in compliance with the Growth Management Act. Next slide, please. So in terms of the public participation requirements, the Growth Management Act says you need to engage the public early and often. There needs to be broad dissemination of proposals and alternatives. There needs to be opportunity for written comments, proper noticing, opportunities for open discussion, communication program, information services, and consideration of and response to public comments. I mean, these are things that I think the city of Samamish is already doing for most of your planning projects. But certainly for an effort that is as major as a periodic update, significant public involvement will be really critical to the success of the project. That includes working with the Planning Commission, the City Council, but also the broader public as well. Next slide. And so in the scope of work currently, these are the elements that we've included. We have increased the sort of level of effort on some of these since the initial scope of work was approved. It includes a public engagement plan. That would include all of the engagement activities, who the targeted stakeholder groups are, a timeline of events, a style guide for the project, and perhaps some branding elements. We also plan to develop a project website. That's not only great for communicating information, but also to get input from the public. We will be conducting stakeholder interviews and focus groups, pop-up engagement activities, so setting up, say, at the farmer's market, or a busy park, or anywhere where we think is a kind of a high-profile location in the community where we get to interact with the public, make them aware of the project, and start to get input from them on the plan priorities. The marquee kind of in-person event that we're planning to do in the fall, we're calling the Planning Summit. It's essentially a workshop, but would include the members of our project team. It could include members of all of the related projects that you've seen in that timeline, that you'll see again in a few moments at the end of our presentation. It's really an opportunity for the community to come together, be educated about what the issues are, learn about all of the various planning projects that kind of feed into the comprehensive plan. And then the focus would be on opportunities to get public input. And then there would be a very detailed sort of summary of that and kind of key takeaways that would help us to start inform the development of the plan. We're planning to do some staff workshops. The comprehensive plan involves many different city departments. This was something we did also during development regulation phase two, and was very successful. So we're planning to have a broader kickoff meeting here shortly with the various city departments, and then plan a series of workshops at kind of key milestones in the development of the plan. The visioning and scoping workshop, which essentially is the meeting tonight to get input from the city council on the final scope of work and to inform the budget. As we move towards the draft plan stage, we would hold an open house. And I think that would be likely in-person, but also have an online open house element. We've learned a lot, I think, from COVID and how to do outreach. And I think while you can never really replace the value of an in-person meeting, we're also kind of realizing that there's some limitations to that in terms of the number of that you're able to get input from. And so we do want to leverage many of the online engagement tools that we work with in-house at Framework and have really expanded during COVID. So we plan to keep that as part of our engagement mix. Working closely with the City Council, Planning Commission, and other boards and commissions as appropriate will be really critical. And then we have some resources to do online surveys at various points of the project. These would be generally qualitative surveys, and to get general feedback. They would not be scoped to be statistically valid like the community visioning survey. Next slide, please. So there are some items in the engagement plan that we would be seeking input from the council. I think one is, does the level of engagement in the draft scope of work match the city council's expectations? We do feel like there's enough resources, certainly to meet the requirements of the Growth Management Act in terms of the state requirements. But we want to hear from the council to make sure that we're in alignment with your expectations for the plan. The other thing we'd be looking for input on is the mix of digital versus in-person engagement. Again, we are planning for a mix, but we've worked with some communities recently have said, you know, we really want you to emphasize in-person engagement. And others have been more focused on digital opportunities. But we can certainly share some of our lessons learned from the real intense digital engagement that we've been doing since COVID, and how we sort of leverage that over the last year to do more of a mix of in-person and digital engagement. And we see a lot of benefit from that. I think the simplest takeaway is we're getting a lot more input from a lot more people than we typically would get if we were just doing in-person meetings. So that's, I think, one takeaway from us. We do have linked in the presentation, a report from a tool called MySidewalk. We have a subscription at Framework. It's an online data and communication tool that's going to be really beneficial for the project. We have included just some of the kind of takeaways from what's called the Public Engagement Guide, which is a pre-designed template that MySidewalk puts together. And we do have link here. Those can be customized. But again, this is just putting in Samamish, and it populates information on things like access to computers and language spoken at home, and things that would influence kind of our approach and methods for public outreach. So feel free to take a look at that. And we'll be doing more customized reporting from MySidewalk as we go forward in the project. And then what would engagement success look like? I think this is a really interesting question, particularly coming out of COVID and having to sort of be forced to use new methods. You know, how do we measure success? You know, the older kind of traditional methods were, you know, we'll invite some people to a meeting, and people may show up, and we'll kind of work with what we have. But I think now we have many more tools at our disposal, and we could get, I think, more focused on what engagement success looks like. And just some quick ideas that we've been thinking about, you know, is it the number of people that participated in the project or provided input? That could be one thing that we could look at. Many of our online tools have great reporting features, so we can know how many people visited the website, how many people went to an online open house, how many comments were received. And just to give you an example, we use a tool called ConVio right now to get feedback on anything visual. And we're currently using that for some of our projects. And literally all day, we'll continue to get emails and notices of people commenting at all hours of the day, really thoughtful comments. And that was something that we didn't have in our toolbox previously. But we're getting a lot more input than I think we used to through some of those traditional methods. And we're still having in-person meetings as well, again, because those individual conversations and the relationships that you're able to build are also really important. Other metrics we could include are survey responses, attendance at workshops and public meetings. But if there's interest from the council, we certainly could put together a more complete list of metrics that we could track and report to the council at kind of major milestones in the plan development to make sure that we're hitting the mark on engagement, because it's really critical to the success of the plan. Next slide, please. Then moving into the comprehensive plan elements, you know, I think there's some question that, and this was a question we were asked in the interview, you know, is this a complete rewrite, or is this just an update? And I think some of that will depend on input from the council, but also what we hear from the public as part of the process. I would say that regardless of whether it's a more substantive or minor update, we would always start with sort of the policy foundation that's in the plan. It's kind of inconceivable that you would just sort of wipe the slate clean with that. So I think early on in the project, we would go through a process of kind of reviewing both the vision, which I know there's an updated draft vision statement that we'll be working with, but also looking at the goals and policies and kind of making sure that they're in general alignment with the council direction and with the input that we're hearing from the public. I think regardless of the substantive, or how substantive the update is, we could give the document certainly kind of a new look and feel. If there was a desire from the city council and staff and the community to do an online plan, so instead of having, you know, a long print document, you could actually make the volume one of the plan be essentially a website, which makes it more accessible and more dynamic. And there's opportunities to embed other information with that website. And that is something we're doing for one of our other clients right now. And it's a similar cost, generally, as laying out the print document. So in the scope of work that was approved, are all of the elements in dark, black text. There are two opt-show elements that we wanted to highlight this evening. And again, at least the economic development was one that we discussed in the interview. So the economic development element right now is a required element. It's just that the state has not provided funding for communities to implement that, so it's not technically required. But it is adopted in the Growth Management Act, and, you know, many cities do have economic development elements. So if there's a desire- So if there's a desire to include that, we certainly could. And then the climate change element, again, I'm sure as many of you know, there was some legislation that was considered in terms of requiring this. It's not required, but the state is providing grant resources to communities that would like to move forward that. And my understanding is the city has an active grant application for that. And then finally, you know, the draft and final plan, there are some resources to do some code policy review, which would then inform the next round of development regulations updates, which we'll hear about later tonight, and then some support for CEPA compliance for the plan. Next slide, please. So in terms of input on the elements, again, I think we're looking for feedback on the two optional elements are these priorities. If so, there may be a need to bring in some additional subconsultants to help with these. In the latest scope of work, which I believe was included in your packet, we do have a budget item in there for an economic development element. The assumption there is that that would be done sort of in-house with our existing team. There was a desire to do something, you know, much more substantive. We could bring in more of an economic development firm or individual that sort of has more expertise in that manner. For the climate change element and to move forward with the work that's contemplated in the grant application, we would need to bring in another consultant. Subconsultant, and we have had some discussions in terms of what that scope of work would look like, and we could bring that back to you at a future date if that's desired. We're looking for feedback on whether there's desire to have a web-based plan. And if you're interested in what a web-based plan is, I think one example, which is for a much larger city, and I'm sure is a very well-resourced project, but it's for Oklahoma City, it's called Plan OKC. There's also a print version on that website, but if you want to see sort of like a Cadillac version of a web-based plan, that would be a good one to take a look at, and I think it's planokc.org. And then I think the last bullet there really speaks to partially the vision statement and also to the land use plan and zoning. And I think one of our questions is, and some of this, I think, was alluded to in the TDR discussion, but is the City Council anticipating potentially major changes to land use plan and zoning? And I think that would be an important piece of feedback for us to understand, you know, thoroughly part of the project. So those are the items that we'd appreciate feedback on, and, you know, we'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Next slide, please. And then finally, this is just the timeline and shows the sort of interrelated efforts that will all kind of feed into the comprehensive plan, starting here in July 2022 and moving to the end of 2024. And we look forward to working with city staff and other consultants that will be working on these various plans. So with that, be happy to turn it back over to the mayor and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. We can't get on that plan on these computers. I just tried, and I was blocked to check out the plan OKC, but that'll be for later. So Councilmember Trean.
Yeah, so let's see. Engagement, I think your first question was really, there was some questions on that engagement slide, but I'm just going to say that, yeah, we want, I think the expectation is that there'll be a high engagement rate and mixed approach to digital and in-person. I'm all in agreement that that's what, if that's the plan you guys are working towards, good job. Then as far as the web-based plan, I would like to see it, but I think that moving forward with the technology-based stuff and how active our community is in technology, that's a yes to me at this point, even though I haven't seen it. I'm just going to jump in with two feet and just say, you know what, let's do it, especially if there's not an additional cost that's going to be there or a small one. The next two questions that you asked or you're looking for direction from would be the economic development element, or I would say options to include or not include. And so I'm all for the climate change element. That's a solid yes for me. And then on the economic development element, that's a no. We're a residential community, and so it's not necessary, and we aren't going to hit 100,000 residents in the next 10 years. So there's no need to spend any extra money developing an economic development element to our comp plan at this time. It's not required by the Growth Management Act, and therefore I don't see any need to spend extra money on it. Thank you. Back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so online versus print, yes. The climate change element, absolutely yes. Heck yes, I think, am I allowed to say that? The economic development plan, I actually think, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Trean, you know, that we aren't going to grow that big, but I do think in light of the conversation that we had in terms of our, you know, our revenue base and things, I do think we need to have an economic development element and start developing some of those plans. Maybe they're just smaller scale, but I think we do have to start considering that as we move forwards so that we don't overburden our residents. So I think that would be important, but to scale it appropriately, I think, is also critical. Two comments, though, that are tangential to this, and that is that I think for the climate change element, I do think we need a climate action plan and goals, like more immediately. I think one of the things we should look at maybe as we go into the budgeting cycle and our planning for 2023 is what things can we do more immediately that will feed into the comp plan update? But I'm not sure we can wait until June or December of 2024 to get started on some of this climate change. And I think some of those goals that we would identify in a climate action plan are actually probably needed inputs for a climate change section of the comp plan. So just from a budgeting standpoint, obviously not directly related to this comp plan, but still a budgeting element. And then I think, you know, that last question, I'm not sure how to answer that. I don't anticipate that we would be doing substantive changes to our land use policies, but I do think, if I recall, there's a housing needs assessment that we need to do and understand that. And so when we say substantive, I think that, I don't know what that means. We may want to move things around a little bit. I don't want to, you know, revamp the entire city, but I think we need to get the data to determine what, if any, changes are needed. And then I don't know what, I don't know how one defines substantive, but those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Howell?
So I was looking for the, I did see that the economic development, or excuse me, the environmental component was, I think, costed out, but I don't think the economic development component was. I think I saw zeros there. So I'm not really sure what that would cost. Am I looking at it right? Or maybe I'm not seeing it. It is really small, and I thought I saw zero. So is it there?
Yeah, the, there was a, so apologies for the confusion. The original scope of work that was approved had the economic development element in there, but it was zeroed out, so you are correct. But the most recent draft element we have priced out, and I will say that we have scaled it, you know, appropriately. It's a relatively, well, compared to the other elements, it's a bit lower. We could certainly scale that, you know, up or down if there was a desire, but we certainly understand that, you know, it would likely be a lesser level of effort maybe than like Redmond, where, you know, twice as many people work there as live there. We understand the conditions are different there. For the climate change element, we put in the pricing that was in the grant application. And I think the only caveat to that is that that is really for kind of the greenhouse gas inventory and analysis, but there is some additional sort of policy work that would be needed to develop the climate change element. So that's not in there, but we think that cost is maybe in the area of around $15,000 or so, ten to $15,000. So that's the only piece of the economic development element and the climate change element that's not in the scope right now. And if it sounds like there's a desire for the climate change work, so again, we have information we're working on that we could bring back to you that is much more fully developed. And I think what we had sort of been envisioning is that this would be kind of a first step towards a climate action plan, that we would get the greenhouse gas inventory and analysis piece done, we would get the climate change element done, and that that could potentially feed into a climate action plan. If there was desire by the council to accelerate that, you know, that's certainly something that we could look at, but that's kind of how we've been thinking about sort of building towards the climate action plan and understanding that, you know, the city has a lot of planning that it's already doing at this time. So again, we can accelerate if there's a desire, but that's what we've put together so far.
Okay, so Jeff, if you've done this already for Redmond, will they share that with us? I know it's a different city. I'm just curious. Do cities share?
I have not done it for, I did not work on the one in Redmond, but there are some examples that we, you know, we could send around that we're aware of, of other cities that have done climate action.
That, okay, well, and actually for the economic development plan is actually two. So I'm a yes for both of those and looking for examples that help me understand, again, the true scope. And my last question is about the website component. As you may know, we're redoing our own website, and what I'm sincerely interested in is that we not only drive traffic to the site, but that residents get used to just going to our website to find all information. So I'm assuming you're setting up a separate subsite, correct, that just plays well with our site?
Yeah, I can give you another example. The closest thing that we have done in terms of a finished product is for the city of Bainbridge Island. It wasn't their comprehensive plan, but it was their design guidelines. It's called Design for Bainbridge. We first did a print version, and then we've just recently launched the website. So that would give you a good example of how that would work. It is a standalone site. It's called designforbainbridge.org, but it's linked through the city site. We certainly tend to design these sites ourselves. We use Wix or Squarespace, one of the tools. We actually have become pretty good at it. So I think there's a lot of flexibility and ease of use that goes with that. But with that said, if you guys are undergoing your new website and there's a desire to have the plan be sort of embedded into the city's website, we could certainly do that. But another, I think, really good example is with the development code now, it's being hosted on Flipping Book. And so if you search Sammish development code, it goes to the webpage on the city site, and there's a nice little button, and you click it, and then it goes to the Flipping Book site. So I think, you know, that would probably be our preference, but again, if there's a desire to have it fully embedded in the website, you know, we're happy to.
I don't want to add to the cost, absolutely, to anything like this, but the traffic is going to be driven from our website, so you'll get traffic from us. I'm assuming you're not doing like an ad campaign, and it's because, or Google Ads or something to drive traffic, correct?
Nope, nope. It would be, it would, you're correct. It would be through searching and going to the city's site first and then linking.
Okay, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Say yes to the having a web-based plan. I would also support the optional items for climate change and having an economic development plan. We talked about just last week being a fiscally sustainable city, and in order to do that, we have to take a look at additional revenue streams. The town center plan is moving forward. I think it's an opportunity for us to take a look at the town center holistically and to basically right-size what we want to do. And for the land use and zoning, there, we do have the housing action plan, and depending on the responses that we get and particularly how it relates to housing types, I would see zoning having, to take a look at zoning simply because in order to drive housing diversity, we're going to have to take a look at zoning and land use. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
I would have to agree with Councilmember Lamb on all the issues that she just mentioned. I also would agree with Councilmember Stewart on a climate action plan. I think having heard from our sustainability ambassadors tonight, who are of a much younger generation than all of us in this room, we have to listen to those voices, and they're really interested and upset with our lack of movement, and that means all of our generations as a collective country. And so I think it's time for a climate action plan. I concur with climate element in the plan and an economic development plan for all the reasons just already stated. Web-based plan, yes. I agree with Councilmember Lamb about housing, and we still waiting on the data that we're, we have this survey out there about what the right housing mix is. I'm interested in finding out what the right housing mix is for all of us across our lifetime. I intend personally, living in Sammish for as long as I'm allowed to live, and it would be nice to know that there are many other housing options for someone like me over the span of a lifetime, so that if you are interested in downsizing, that you could do that within Sammish and not have to relocate, because that's something I'm sure lots of people would rather not do. So I think we need to get that data, and that may or may not impact what we already have intact in terms of land use and zoning. Maybe it won't, who knows, but I think we need to get the data on that. Then the last thing I just wanted to bring up, it was mentioned that if we, as a council, wanted further feedback from the consultant as to whether they're hitting their marks on public engagement, I would really like to hear a bit more about that going forward because I think everyone could agree that the success of any plan will be as successful as how much we engage the public. We think times when we are in all these institutions, we exist in our bubble, and we hear from a certain section or certain people from our community who know exactly how to come and give public comment and do those kinds of things and are publicly engaged. But how do we engage people who really have got other things on their mind? So, and rightly so. So I think I would be really interested to hear that we are hitting our benchmarks on public engagement. I think that's the key to any successful plan. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Great. If there's no other comments, okay. Yeah, so I say yes to all discretionary work items. The only thing with web-based, of course, if everyone can access, you know, access it, whether that's coming in or to a library or something, so that would be my only thought, just making sure that if it's only web-based, that there's paper somewhere. You've got to have your backup. So, yeah, that's all.
Great. So the one topic I think that I hear we need to look a little closer at is the degree of zoning and land use change that might result from comp plan update. One important piece of information that we are all waiting on very anxiously and looking forward to getting this from the county, from the Growth Management Planning Council Affordable Housing Committee, is what the city's share of affordable housing units is going to be. And the King County Council will likely be amending the, actually, they will be amending the countywide planning policies based on direction from the Growth Management Planning Council to add additional targets for affordable housing. So we might find ourselves in a position, depending on the methodology for disaggregation of affordable housing need, we might find ourselves in a position as a city of needing to find ways to actually accommodate that need, which could result in the need for us to analyze our zoning structure in the city. So what we could do is we could include a moderate budget for that work, not a small budget, not a medium budget, a moderate budget. And if we don't use it, then that will be cost savings in the plan, and we'll have to keep a tab on that and show how that funding is being used. So that's something you might see in the budget proposal that comes back to you because that is a major variable right now that we just don't know because we don't have that assigned target for the city from the county. So in response to one other item I heard that I think is really important to all of us, and that is environmental sustainability and climate action, there are things that the city has sort of on the books, ready to go, that the council, if they chose to fund or take action on, could do. An example of that that is ready to go is the urban forest management plan. We have an implementation plan for that, and there are many things that could be done to help manage our urban forests in response to climate change. So that's an example. So there are things that are queued up and ready to go. We don't necessarily have to create a climate action plan. We already have things that I think are shelf-ready that if the council chose to fund, we could fund, we could do.
Thank you, I'll be emailing you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks, David. On the, the budget for the, you know, potential zoning changes that may be needed based on the affordable housing, is that something from a budgetary perspective? Can we have that be like a contingent budget that we wait, that we, you know, can play with a little bit so that we we don't allocate it if it's not needed, but we have something there? I don't know if it matters, but that that feels like there's some up-in-the-airness, and there might be some timing issues. And I certainly want us to have a way to allocate that, but not if we don't have to, right?
If it's okay, Councilmember, I'll grab that one.
Just kind of look in your way.
I think, yeah, I assumed. I think that we are working on and are happy to try to essentially, as we tee up the budget, sort of what is our base budget, and then what are some options for you all on top of that? And I think that's what we're sort of aiming for, in part, as we know, the council's doing a goal-setting retreat, so we want to make sure that there are those those options as we move into the budget process, that you have the ability to say, you know, if we can get there, what would it cost? We'll try to price those out a little bit and come up with some options so that you can make decisions in the fall.
Great, great. And then, David, I love the idea up there, if we have things that are shelf-ready from a climate perspective. Obviously, I'm a fan of the Urban Forestry Management Plan. I'm also very realistic in knowing that we can't plant enough trees to offset the carbon that we generate. So we need, we need a lot more than just more trees, right? And so not to say that we shouldn't work on the trees, but I think it has to be trees and. So if there are other things that staff has, I'd love to hear about those, but I do think there's a sense of urgency in terms of things we can start doing to reduce our carbon generation and not just sequester it. Thanks.
All right, I think if there is nothing else, I think you've got some pretty good direction.
Yes, we really appreciate it, and we'll definitely be re-watching the video here to make sure we've extracted every piece of information.
Totally understand. All right, so next we will move on to Critical Areas Ordinance Update.
And that's me again, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. We're going to be promoting Nell Lund from the Watershed Company, who will be assisting me tonight in the presentation. I'll be doing a presentation, and she will then be taking over and finishing the presentation with some specifics regarding best available science and some of the other components of a Critical Areas Update. So bear with me for a minute while I share my screen, and we'll begin the presentation. Thank you. So it appears the screen share worked. Just a second. So we're here tonight to build background on the city's Critical Areas Rules and provide an overview of the upcoming Critical Areas Update process, initial scope of work, budget, and potential areas of special focus. The Watershed Company is here tonight to support us. They have extensive experience in working with the city's Critical Areas Codes and have experience in Critical Areas Update Process. We have consulted with them to build an initial Critical Areas Update scope of work and budget, including initial scoping and areas of special focus. The Growth Management Act requires that all cities and counties adopt development regulations that protect critical areas. These regulations help to preserve the natural environment, maintain fish and wildlife habitat, and protect drinking water. Protecting critical areas also helps reduce exposure to risks such as landslides or flooding and maintains the natural elements of our landscape. In addition to GMA requirements, there are also policies around identification and protection of critical areas in Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 and in the King County Countywide Planning Policies. The 1990 State Growth Management Act requires local governments to include best available science in developing policies and regulations protecting the functions and values of critical areas. All Washington counties and cities are required to review, evaluate, and if necessary, revise their critical areas ordinances according to a schedule established by the Washington State Legislature. Our next update is due in December 2024, the same time our Comprehensive Plan update is due. Jurisdictions must demonstrate that the best available science has been considered when creating their critical areas ordinance by documenting scientific sources that support their approach to regulating critical areas and explaining when policies depart from the science-based recommendations. Our consultant, the Watershed Company, will be providing more background on what best available science is, how it is used in creating and updating critical areas rules. Historically, critical areas updates have proven quite controversial, as this type of regulation is often seen as government overreach. The last city of Samamish Critical Areas Ordinance Update held true to this and included dozens of public meetings, and in a few instances ended in litigation. We have budgeted for this in the project scope. One of the biggest expenses in the proposed budget is public meetings. The categories of critical areas required by RCW 5670A are wetlands, critical aquifer recharge areas, flood hazard areas, geologically hazardous areas, and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. These are must-have components of a critical areas rule set. However, each city may rename or deviate from the list, so long as proper protections for each of these state-mandated resource groups is clearly provided in the critical areas rules and follows best available science. Current city code defines critical areas as those areas in the city that are erosion hazard areas, landslide hazard areas, seismic hazard areas, aquifer recharge areas, wetlands, streams, and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. It is important to note that not all critical areas are mapped. And in fact, most that are mapped are only mapped as an advisory, and the presence or absence of a critical area must be field-verified based on the definition or parameters of that specific resource area. For example, a wetland must have three indicators present: wetland-adapted vegetation, wetland-adapted soils, and wetland hydrology. However, there are three categories in the city where maps represent the de facto location of the resource. However, these maps may no longer represent the best available science, as they are outdated. These are the critical aquifer recharge areas, flood hazard areas, and erosion hazard near-sensitive water bodies areas. In these cases, the maps are somewhat problematic, outdated, and in need of review, which can be an expensive endeavor. An important takeaway is that some critical areas are mapped based on definitions, while some follow city-provided maps to identify their location. For those that are mapped either as advisory or as de facto boundary, the city's maps are significantly in need of update. Critical areas are regulated with layers of protection. Generally, the defined or mapped area is protected, such as a wetland boundary; an alteration of the resource area is prohibited. The protected resource area is also buffered with a prescribed buffer ring to further protect the resource. Then, there is an additional structure setback applied in addition to the buffer. In some cases, such as the critical aquifer recharge area or erosion hazard area, there is no buffer or setback. Rather, the area that is defined or mapped is protected by limits on activities that could impact water quality and quantity. Generally, critical areas rules are applied in response to a protected, a proposed action such as a permit application. Critical areas rules are not retroactive and cannot compel application unless in response to an action to alter property. Further, the current critical areas rules include extensive exceptions for existing conditions that can be maintained and often completely replaced or replicated in perpetuity. The city does have a limit on authority, and critical areas rules are often seen as government overreach. When application of critical areas rules results in land that cannot be used, it is considered a taking of a constitutional right to use and enjoy property. However, property owners do not have a constitutional right to the most profitable use of their property, just a reasonable use of their property. In a takings challenge to a regulation, courts generally do not require compensation when the regulation merely decreases property value or prevents property owners from doing exactly what they want with their property. As long as a regulation allows property to be put in productive economic use, the property has value, and the regulation will not be deemed to deny all reasonable economic use of the property. There is no regulatory taking in that situation. It is important to remember that there is a balance between protecting sensitive features and resources and allowing constitutionally-protected reasonable use of property. To help balance property rights and protections of critical areas and to ensure application of critical areas rules is reflective of actual on-the-ground condition, the city's code employs different forms of flexibility, including buffer adjustments in the form of buffer reductions and buffer averaging. The code also includes allowances for transfer of density rights intended to protect sensitive land and use it as a receiving site by placing, excuse me, use as a sending site by placing land in conservation, in a conservation easement, and sending the density to a more appropriate receiving site in another part of the city. While we do have a transfer of density rights program in the city's code, it does need improvements for practical application, as discussed earlier this evening. Finally, another area of flexibility is a category of exceptions, where the city's critical areas rules offer two exceptions: one for public agency projects, and the other for reasonable use of property. For reasonable use, basically, if through application of the city's critical areas rules, the site is determined to be undevelopable, and the property owner's reasonable use of property is not achievable, the reasonable use exception allows enough flexibility to attain reasonable use of the property through limited development. Reasonable use exceptions are a mechanism by which a local jurisdiction may grant relief from code requirements where compliance leaves no reasonable use of the property. Reasonable use exceptions are a legal concept that has been articulated by federal and state courts in regulatory takings cases. In a takings case, the decision-maker must balance the public's interest against the owner's interests by considering the nature of the harm, the nature of the harm the regulation is intended to prevent, the availability and effectiveness of alternative protection measures, and the economic loss borne by the property owner. Public interest factors include the seriousness of the public problem, the extent to which the land involved contributes to the problem, the degree to which the regulation solves the problem, and the feasibility of less oppressive solutions. The city has well-established rules and process for reasonable use of property that allows limited development of protected critical areas, when the strict application of the rules would render the property undevelopable in order to avoid a takings claim. Typically, development of this type is accompanied by significant mitigation in financial security during construction to ensure mitigation measures will be properly implemented. It is also important to note that as part of the recent Development Regulations Phase Two project, the city updated the rules related to reasonable use exceptions to clarify what a reasonable development is. When planning and budgeting for the upcoming Critical Areas Update, there are two general categories to consider: those elements and components of a critical areas rule set required by state law, and those that are optional at the discretion of the jurisdiction. As updating a critical areas ordinance can be a costly and time-consuming process, we want to be clear that addition of jurisdiction-specific areas and topics of interest add expense to the process. The city's upcoming Critical Areas Update follows a deadline set by state law. The update happens in parallel with the Comprehensive Plan periodic review update and must be harmonized with Comprehensive Plan policies. The update follows the State Department of Commerce prescribed process, must demonstrate application of best available science, and ultimately must achieve approval by the Washington State Department of Ecology and Washington State Department of Commerce. In addition to those topics required under state law and through best available science, the city can add areas of special focus to be addressed within the Critical Areas Update. This is a preliminary list of topics staff have heard interest in, either from citizens, the commission, or the council. However, as stated earlier, the addition of topics beyond those required by state law add additional expense to the process. We are seeking early feedback as we prepare draft work plan and budget on the addition of these items to the scope of work, so we may adequately plan and budget for this important process. If we are not directed to plan and budget for additional topics beyond what is required by state law now, we will not be able to accommodate additional topics later in the process. As part of the presentation on this topic to the Planning Commission in June of 2016, the following questions were raised, and we felt it would be helpful for us to answer them for the council, too. First question is, "It will be very valuable to the Planning Commission to provide some description of what the five defined critical areas encompass. What is included?" Those are the items that are defined by state law. However, the city can deviate from those and redefine those, so long as best available science is accounted for and we are providing adequate protection for the state-mandated critical areas. I think more detailed description of each of the listed optional areas of special focus will be helpful, especially providing differentiation on where there is overlap between the five defined categories and the various optional categories. Some of the optional areas of special focus that are really important are habitat corridors, which we've heard a lot about from various members of the community, members of the council. The city does have, the city did have habitat corridors in a prior version of its Critical Areas Ordinance. However, with the last update that occurred, the the method of protecting habitat corridors was significantly changed, and we feel the the protection was diminished. So we're looking to restore back to what we, similar to what we previously had, where we are mapping out where we think wildlife movements occur throughout the city, so that we can look to restoring connections and maintaining connections, as opposed to simply protecting existing resource areas. So that's one example. Fish-bearing streams, there are changes in state definitions as to what a fish-bearing stream is. In the past, a fish-bearing stream required semanids, presence of semanids. However, it has changed to simply having the presence of fish habitat. So you don't necessarily have to have fish presence for it to be considered a fish-bearing stream under the new state definition. We have been advocated by, or we have been petitioned by the tribes to change our definition. We did bring this to the council as part of our last Charlotte Master Program update review. At that point, we we punted it to the Critical Areas Update, where we said we'd be taking it on at that point. So here we are, hoping to bring that into the mix here. We would like to thoroughly review the city's geologic hazardous areas controls, where this is erosion hazard areas, landslide hazard areas, steep slopes, et cetera, you name it, we have quite a few. They're very confusing and difficult to apply, and we would like to evaluate whether we could replace those with one simplified set of rules that achieves the same protection measures. We think that is possible, and we have been talking to people like Mary Victor, who's a big advocate of this. Climate change is an element we should definitely consider and include in our critical areas rules, especially around resiliency and how we can plan to help protect some of these resources to account for things like changes in weather patterns and help help make sure we're looking to the future when we build rule sets. Flooding, for example, is something that results from changes in weather patterns. Preservation, this is a really important one. It's identification and protection of high, properties of high ecological value. This ties nicely in with our TDR program discussion that we had tonight. The idea here is that we could identify properties that are high in ecological value. One way for us to make, there's a restriction that is complex, where you can't make public investment on private property, because it's considered to be a gift of public funds. One workaround that some cities have applied is where they acquire easement on private property, and then they invest in that public easement. And that public easement is an ecological benefit easement of sorts. So that's something we could add to the mix here and look at doing. We think there's a lot of opportunity for us to set up, set ourselves up for more opportunities for restoration in the city. That would require things like having policy language around easements. Grant funding, this is one area we'd really like to go after, is there are many grants out there. We haven't really taken advantage of those grants, and we feel like if we had policy language in the Comprehensive Plan and we had some some more direct code language in the city's code, that we might be able to be, position ourselves to be more appealable to the granting agencies. So that's a little better description of the list. Does the scope of work include a review of what similar cities are doing? Yes, we will be looking at what similar cities are doing. However, every city is different in its landscape setting, and every city is different in the resources that it has. The wetlands and slope conditions in Samamish, for example, are very different than what you might find in other cities. How are noise and light evaluated as part of this process? Are these included or not considered? They are not considered as part of this process. There are no current light restrictions that I'm aware of for critical areas, although the council has raised interest in taking on a Cockney migratory corridor light analysis. So that might be something we'd want to add to it. We'll see what transpires with that study and where that goes. So that might be something we add in. So that might be something we add in. Do steep slopes fit into geologic hazard areas? Yes, they do. What about areas of high erosive soil? They do also fit into geologic hazard areas. Are there any culturally significant Native American or other historic sites in Sammamish? There are. Is this part of the CIO evaluation process? It is not. There's a separate chapter in our code that applies there. Are buffers considered as part of this? Yes, they are. Is there good science on this, or is it just based on best practice? There is science, it's best, it is based on best available science. What about the creation of new critical areas? If a large development creates a new wetland, does the CIO apply to this new wetland? In some cases, it does; in some cases, it doesn't. I think that's something that is up to discussion, something we could definitely raise and more thoroughly evaluate as part of the process. Are wildlife corridors part of the evaluation of protected habitat areas, even if the corridors aren't technically a habitat? So if there is no animal using it, but it provides habitat, I would consider it to be, or it could provide habitat, I would consider it to be habitat. The idea there is we connect all of the fragments and patches throughout the city so that we can provide meaningful migratory routes for animals in the city. Is restoration of salmon-bearing streams part of this, like the Zaccus Creek project? This was recently a communication about this. So restoration of salmon-bearing streams is peripherally part of this, where we start to identify policies and methods to obtain easements or access to private property where we can begin to invest in those areas and pursue restoration.
Say that again?
Yeah, so it's peripherally part of it, in a way that the critical areas rules themselves do not compel restoration unless there's a proposed action, right? But what we could be doing is looking at setting up policy in our comp plan and some code components that allow us to obtain, acquire, purchase easements on private property in order to pursue restoration, or perhaps property owners would want to grant that in favor of restoration. And then the city is able to invest in restoration on that private property, whereas the city could not, because it would be a gift of public fund, to just simply put in plants on somebody's property, for example. How are existing bodies of water incorporated into this process? I'm thinking of Pine Lake and Beaver Lake. Pine Lake and Beaver Lake are covered under the city's shoreline master program, and regulations regarding fringe wetlands, for example, that might be along the shoreline of those lakes, are covered through critical areas rules that are directly integrated into the shoreline master program. How does the critical areas ordinance tie into the shoreline regulations? Critical areas ordinance is adopted by reference into the city's shoreline regulations. So when we update the critical areas rules, we will also have to transmit those to ecology, who then in part, well, in turn will update the city's critical areas rules, or, excuse me, will then update the city's shoreline rules. Will the consultant or the staff provide some level of evaluation regarding how any changes under consideration may limit reasonable use from what is currently in place? This has been something in the past that both the council and the planning commission have raised, that if we're going to be expanding, for example, stream protections, how does it affect private property? We don't, we don't, we don't have a budget to analyze this in close detail across the city and comprehensively look at all the parcels. However, we could look at some sample basins, for example, that might indicate how that would impact a basin and the properties in that basin. So that's, that is our approach, is to be efficient in use of public funds to study that. Will this project include updating the city's critical areas mapping? That depends on the budget. We would very much like to get started in updating the critical areas maps. However, we do understand that there are other, there are other efforts that the city might want to take on, and it's quite expensive to update the maps. So we could talk about that. We could bring back a proposal as part of the budget process to update the maps, and you could choose to take that on in '23 or '24, or take it on in '25 and '26 after the critical areas rules have been updated. Who determines what the best available science is? Are there ways to challenge the best available science? Well, that's determined generally by the State Department of Ecology and by qualified professionals, and there are ways to challenge it. That was one of the components of litigation back in the last critical areas update, was related to the no disturbance area and the prohibition of subdivision in the no disturbance area, which resulted in creation of a pilot program that allowed for limited numbers of subdivisions under certain terms. Which has been repealed. I think one important component to remember is this is a consultant-supported effort. And with that note, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Nell Lund with the Watershed Company. I will stop my share, just a second. And I believe Nell should be here. I don't know if she's been promoted.
Yeah, I am here.
Great.
Thanks, David.
And Nell, do you want to run your presentation and share screen, or would you like me to share it for you?
I know I had some difficulty last time. I can give it a try here, but if it, let's see how this goes. Is everyone able to see?
I can see, but we do need to get to the presentation mode.
Yeah. You know...
Bottom, the bottom right of the screen, there's a little screen presentation next to, there you go.
Okay. No, I'm not seeing, there it goes. Okay, is that working for her one?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So as David said, the Watershed Company, just for context, we were an on-call consultant for City of Sammamish. We do a lot of peer review, and David has brought us on board in that on-call capacity to help scope the CIO update and determine kind of a ballpark budget to help, you know, the Planning Commission and City Council consider their approach for this and what the budget implications would be. So just a little overview here, as David mentioned, this is a requirement under the Growth Management Act, and the, and the Growth Management Act does require, it both defines the critical areas and requires the use of best available science in protection and designation of those areas. All cities and counties must incorporate best available science when developing policies and regulations to protect critical areas. And in particular, special consideration must be given to salmon recovery efforts, including all life stages and habitat protection elements, you know, for spawning, rearing, and migration. So as David mentioned, there is, there can be some questions or, you know, need to define best available science for the public and the parties involved as you go through this process. Best available science is prepared by qualified professionals. It's sources that have gone through a valid scientific process, such as peer review, standardized methodology, you know, quantitative analysis typically comes with references, and common sources of scientific information that we rely on, our research, monitoring, inventory, surveys, modeling, assessments, synthesis. Ecology in particular has a best available science synthesis document that we refer to as we look at some of these protections, particularly for wetlands. And just a cautionary note, the, the Washington Administrative Code goes into great detail describing what is and is not best available science. So you need to be careful in considering input, particularly from the public, that you're separating anecdotal information and non-expert opinion from scientific information. So how is best available science included in policies and regulations? As we've discussed, that is part of the requirement that you're tasked with completing here. You need to both consider and include relevant best available science information in decision-making, policies, and regulations. There are instances, sometimes through this process, where cities or counties deviate in some fashion from those standard recommendations, and when that occurs, they need to document the rationale for the departure and identify potential risks to the critical areas, and then identify what mitigation measures they're employing to limit the associated risk. So as we've heard a couple times now, there are five areas that are required to be covered as critical areas in this update: wetlands, critical aquifer recharge areas or CARAs, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, frequently flooded areas, and geologically hazardous areas. David has identified through the scoping process areas of special focus for the city. Climate change, which I, as you may be aware, it could become a requirement in coming years. There was a House bill, 1099, that did not pass, but it sounds like it's going to be coming back, coming up for vote again, and that would require cities and counties, I think over 6,000 people, which you certainly are, to incorporate climate change in their comprehensive planning. And then the other is balancing property rights with critical area protection, specifically when looking at protections for streams, and also looking at, as David mentioned, as sort of revisiting or maybe reincorporating some of the habitat corridor protections that used to be spelled out a bit more in the code. And for geologic hazard areas in particular, the organization in the code is not ideal, as David described it, and could definitely use some improvement for clarity. And then, and then grant funding, reviewing policies and regulations that would be needed to support use of grant funds on private property where there's a public benefit. So our scope of work that we've put together, this is just a very brief list, in the interest of allowing the city to compare apples to apples when proposals come in, after this goes out to bid, we've gone to the effort to try and really spell out, you know, the number of meetings for the public outreach and project management, the type of support, which would all, in addition to public meetings, would include preparing exhibits for open houses and workshops, and providing some online support to help inform and communicate with the public. So having, having a detailed scope, the intent is, again, to allow apples-to-apples comparison as people put forth bids. So the second item is to serve as a contributing consultant to, with the comprehensive planning update team. And as David mentioned, there needs to be harmony between the policies in the comp plan update and the CIO update based on best available science. So this is an opportunity to work together to ensure that we are viewing everything kind of through that lens and ensuring that consistency. And then third, the common step in this process that is helpful as you look at your city is just to do an existing conditions assessment. This is generally kind of the desktop exercise for this type of planning effort, where you are looking at maps and inventories and other supporting documents from the city that help build the picture of what resources you're looking to protect, and also what gaps you have in that data that you might want to address independently from this update effort. And then a big piece of this is the best available science review. So this is one area where we could expand upon the scope with additional sections dedicated to climate change and habitat corridors to help support those optional items if needed. That is followed by a gap analysis of the current CIO. The scope as written is identify a matrix showing critical area regulations that need to be updated to demonstrate compliance with VAS recommendations, and that format, in our experience, is sort of quick and easy to read and understand. So that is what is specified in the scope. And then, next, you move into the draft CIO regulation update. Again, this is where some, some of those optional special areas of focus come in. So of course, there will be a markup, an outline first of the proposed changes to the CIO, you know, followed by markups of the code that go through a process of review before being finalized. This could include a comparison of the CIO revision, or yes, CIO revisions, to up to three other cities, and just to see how you compare it to surrounding jurisdictions. And this could also be a good location to summarize code restructuring for the geologic hazard areas if the city decides to address that. So once that process is complete, we move into supporting local adoption. That includes CEPA checklist, CIO adoption process meetings with city council and planning commission, and then supporting the update by tracking public comments, responding to public comments, and reporting back to the commission and the council. And, and then reviewing and editing, you know, the document based on all the feedback received, and then supporting consultation with the agencies, including the Department of Ecology, regional groups, neighboring cities, local tribes, you know, generally stakeholders that are interested in the update will need to support the cities, or the consultant will need to support the city's communication with them. And then lastly, I think David smartly included here some staff training, where some handout or guide could be prepared for city staff and presented to them either virtually in person for a series of training sessions, so that everyone in their busy schedules is up to date on the changes and able to implement them. Sorry, I think I forgot some, oh, no, I didn't. So lastly, again, these are, these are ballpark costs intended to help the city with budgeting as you move ahead with this task. And at David's request, broken it down between the required tasks and the required plus optional items that we've discussed. I've highlighted the optional items in the table here in blue. You'll notice they don't exactly add up to the difference because there's some additional time really in each step as we incorporate more topics and elements, but those are the, those are the major action items that result in significant changes in cost. And that, that sums it up. I guess I would just add that, as David mentioned, this is, this budget does represent a significant amount of support for public outreach and communication, as that's anticipated as being important for the city.
So council, I think we'll have to extend...
So Council, I think we'll have to extend before we move on. I don't know how long the next topic will be, so. I'll entertain a motion for...
I move we extend to 10:30 as a starting point.
My second?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of extending until 10:30, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, 7-0, we are extended till 10:30. Okay, please continue.
So I believe, thank you, Nell. That's it for city presentation. We're available for comment and feedback. I will point out that one item that was, that we have heard about over the years is the maps need to be updated. However, we don't recommend updating the maps as part of the process. We recommend that a report be generated as part of this process that directs what maps should be updated. You might see that some maps are no longer relevant. The definitions have changed from best available science. So if we went ahead and updated the maps now, based on what we have now, we might be replicating that effort or spending resource dollars that didn't need to be spent.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Howe.
Thank you, and thank you for that extra note about the maps, because you read my mind. And the other thing I was going to ask about is the public outreach. It wasn't super clear by reading the proposal, who was really doing the lion's share? I understand that Nell's group is supporting you, but is the city doing the outreach?
So the consultant would be supporting outreach for content. The city staff would be running and setting up the meetings, et cetera.
Perfect. Okay, I'm very much in support of the early work you're doing on this project. It's really important.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. David, do you recommend that we do all of these optional items on here? Is that like a staff recommendation, which it's not a bad thing? I'm just curious.
My recommendation is yes.
Because I'm very cognizant that we're like, yes, to everything tonight. And I'm starting to, you know, the checkbook tally's starting to get a little scary in my head. So I'm, before you, and before you answer that, so first, you know, do you guys recommend that? And then the second part I'm starting to also tally up in my head is, we're going to be doing a lot of public outreach, right, with the comp plan update and stuff? And is there a coordination effort going on here? Because I feel like we're going to get diminishing returns on some of these outreach if we're hitting people up over and over again. And I don't know, it may be better to chunk it up and give them little bite size, or it may be better to kind of hit them once. So I'm just curious about those.
So you're reading our minds there. That's one of the reasons why we brought this to you tonight in a coordinated effort to bring all these topics together, so you're aware of the pure width of these issues. The other issue that we are facing is, we'd love to take on more. However, even if we were to add budget and staff, we simply don't have the logistical capacity to hold that many public meetings, to have that many city council meetings, to give the public the opportunity to have screen time with the material. So we have identified what we believe to be the maximum that we can take on, and that's represented here. There are other topics that we have that are idling on our work plan, so to speak, that will not be brought forward because we have reached critical mass for the next, for the 23-24 cycle. You'll be hearing about that in the next presentation regarding development regs Phase Three, because there are some items that we definitely will not be able to take on and will need to punt to 25 and 26. I can't believe I'm saying those numbers, but it's right around the corner. So we think that these items are really important to take on. We've heard a lot from the community about them. There have been multiple times in planning commission meetings or city council meetings where we've been looking at docket requests, where we have told citizens, well, let's hold off on that, let's not docket that, because that would be best bundled with the critical areas update. So here we are, looking at the critical areas update, and we're saying, well, we've been keeping track of these items, and we think they all should be rolled into this.
Right. So I guess, yes, I agree with everything you said, and it feels like we also need to probably see the list of the idling things as well, right? Just to make sure, you know, there aren't some different trade-offs we might have to make. But I am very cognizant of, you know, there are limits to how much you can get done in the next 18 months, no matter how much money or consultants we give you. So I just want to make sure we're not biting off more than we can chew. So, thanks.
All right, if there were no other comments, or do you need just head nods? I think if this is staff recommendation, all nine, I'm like, yes, love it.
Great, so we will...
Over many there are.
The next time you'll see this will be in a budget presentation. So, you know, hopefully this gives you some advance awareness of this project and what's required and what's optional and what we're looking at, so that when it comes back to you, it helps understanding. And if there is a need for us to revert back to the minimum, we could always do that again at that point in time. However, we're going to move it forward as outlined here in the presentation.
That sounds great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Nell.
Thank you, Nell.
All right, we'll move to your last item, Phase Three Development Regulations.
The fourth item of new business on tonight's agenda is Development Regulations Phase Three. With me tonight, I have Evan Fisher, Senior Management Analyst, who will be providing a presentation on this topic. That'll be followed by opportunity for questions and dialogue with the council. Thank you, Evan.
Great, thanks, David, and thank you, council. Good evening. My name is Evan Fisher, and as David said, I'm a senior management analyst with DCD. Tonight, I'll be providing you with a brief presentation on the Phase Three Development Regulations Updates, particularly focusing on how they will work in conjunction with the Comprehensive Plan Update. As background, the development regulations were first adopted upon the city's incorporation in 1999. From that point, the development of regulations remained largely unchanged until 2018, when the city council adopted interim regulations and directed staff to begin permanent updates, which would become Phase One. Phase One was adopted in May 2019 and responded to community concerns relating to recent development. Phase Two expanded on that work by establishing neighborhood design principles and standards, and consolidated the city's development regulations into one unified title called the Semamish Development Code, which was adopted in December of 2021. That brings us to the next step, Phase Three. Phase Three is a direct follow-up from the work done in Phase Two, and will include topics the public and city council want to see addressed. But first, need firm policy direction established through the city's comprehensive planning process. Some of these items were originally considered as part of Phase Two, but it became clear that before effective regulations could be developed, the city needed clear policy direction to be established through the public process. Phase Three was initially scoped during Phase Two, and includes items that were either initially looked at during Phase Two but were tabled as they needed policy direction. Additionally, some items were added as a result of feedback from the planning commission and city council. The Phase Three include, the Phase Three scope includes items like creating a design review program, developing green building code, and promoting affordable housing through development regulations. Now I'd like to shift gears to describe how Phase Three will interact with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. As a reminder, there are two types of actions taking place during the comp plan update. Those are actions that are required and those that are considered optional. Required actions ensure the comp plan update will comply with state law and be consistent with regional and local planning policies, whereas optional actions are those that are not required by state law. It's worth noting, as has been described just a moment ago by David, that because of the very full staff work plan during the 23-24 planning period, optional actions would likely require additional resources and project time. This slide provides a broad overview of the steps that will be taken to complete the Comprehensive Plan Update. The policy setting and drafting phase of the comp plan update provides a natural opportunity for the city to have Phase Three policy-setting conversations. These conversations will likely occur during aspects of the comp plan update, like setting policies around affordable housing, climate change mitigation measures like green building codes, or discussing land use policies. Through these conversations, clear policy directions will be set, which will then direct the creation of development regulations. Once policies have been set, the city will begin updating its development regulations to meet the requirements of the GMA. As part of this code work, some Phase Three development regulations may be included in these updates, but it's unlikely that all will be included. Those Phase Three items that end up falling outside of what are required actions will either require additional resources or will need to happen after the Comprehensive Plan Update is complete. This slide helps to emphasize the overall approach to Phase Three and the comp plan update process. Phase Three policy setting will occur as part of the policy setting taking place as part of the comp plan update. Any Phase Three code updates that can occur during the GMA-required updates to the development regulations will occur, but bigger additional and optional items will likely be deferred until the Comprehensive Plan Update is complete. With that, that brings us to the questions we're asking, the feedback we're asking from council tonight, which are, are there additional items that should be included in the Phase Three scope of work, or are there items that should be removed from that scope of work? Are there any Phase Three scope of work items that are particular priorities for the council? And does the council wish to include separate or additional funding for Phase Three items that would be considered optional? And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Clark.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
I will try to go super quickly. On the list that was in the packet, I think the things you've already touched on, add elements related to environmental sustainability and affordable housing, and incentives to promote better outcomes in relation to sustainability and affordable housing, yes. Green building code and sustainability, yes, and, you know, potentially having incentives to do even more there. Those, I think, are part of what you're probably going to be addressing in the comp plan anyway for other climate change elements, so to me, that makes sense. Flexibility for new school development, that one seems like it might be needed. I don't even know if we have any, you know, other than, within the, so yeah, within the town center area, we have a potential, right? There's property there, so that would be one. But I would say, everything else, if you need to, maybe not.
If I could respond to that, so in discussion with Jeff Arango from Framework, who supported the Phase Two effort and who's also our consultant for the Comprehensive Plan Update, some of the, we asked him about these items and trying to budget for them, and he did identify, and this one is challenging for us, because we, something we really want to take on, but it's also something that we see as a potential major lift, is the green building code. So if we were looking at achieving, hitting critical mass where we can no longer do more work, some of the outreach and relation to the building community and the work that has to be done to support that is something that we would propose pushing to 25 and 26 as a follow-on to the comp plan update. I know that it's also important to get that done now. That's, I see that also. However, for us, it becomes a challenge around having the bandwidth to get all of this done within 23 and 24.
Just out of curiosity, since we have so many other items that overlap with the climate change pieces, do you have more specifics on why this is particularly challenging? I just see, like, when I look at, when I think about climate change and I think about our building code, when we build a building, it typically is around for like 50 years. And so every day, you know, every building that gets built that doesn't have this built in, it's not a one-time hit, it's a hit for a really, really long time. So that's where I get a little bit worried about that. So, you know, I'd be, from my perspective, I'd be willing to trade off something else to be able to incorporate this into, you know, anything that we can do, because I'm assuming, right, like, this is a development reg, it'll impact any new development and any redevelopment that happens and any upgrades that people do. So it feels really, really important right now, just to me. So, thanks.
Councilmember Trine?
David, help me understand this design review program. Is that, because, I mean, what we've already done is put design standards in. Is this kind of, would this be that next level of detail?
Yeah, this is something that came up with the planning commission years ago, and it relates back to neighborhood character.
Yeah.
And it is something that we have kept on in the backburner of the work plan. And there is a significant cost associated with this, not just in developing design review standards by neighborhood, but also in setting up a design review program going forward that would require some sort of citizen-appointed board or body to perform design review in, you know, certain scalable projects in the city. I don't, you know, you could apply it from the level of one new single-family home all the way up to, you know, large-scale subdivisions, and at any point in there, you could choose where it would be applicable.
Okay, you can move that out to 25, 26. Help me out understanding the, the LID, if we work diligently and instill LID, Low-Impact Development, sorry for my acronym, people, so Low-Impact Development Standards, in some ways, are we starting to reach that green building code and sustainability?
There is overlap. I think the main point with green building codes and sustainability comes in the form of whether it is incentivized or required. And that really is the crossroads of the amount of public feedback and engagement, master builders, others, as to whether you're requiring it or you're incentivizing it. There are cities that are turning the corner and are requiring it. However, historically, most cities have incentivized it. There are plug-and-play codes we could look at that would be pretty easy to simply pull into our code and adopt. However, the, I think, heavy lift comes in the form of when you're requiring it and the amount of public engagement and potential public opposition to requiring that type of standard in a building code.
I take it it would increase the cost of housing, too?
That is a potential.
Actually, I would, I would move all of the, all of these to the end. I just see the heavy lift and the money and what we're going to spend, and I like the staff recommendation that we work through the items that you have already slated on there for Phase Three, and then move the rest to 25, 26. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lam?
The one thing that I did notice that was missing is that we're promoting affordable housing, and we're not promoting housing types. So could that be added in there? And then the other one was on the design review, and I'm not sure where in the process we would see this information. I was taking a look at other cities' design reviews. I looked at Redmond's, and they exclude in their design reviews, single-family home and duplexes. So, and theirs is primarily for commercial multifamily development. And for us, I guess I would equate that to us, you know, having design reviews for the town center, which I think would be pretty important. So where in this process would we actually define what gets reviewed? Would that be like before we approve something, obviously? Like, would we actually see what the plans are for this design review?
So we do already do design review with the town center as part of the UZDP process. So there is a form of design review done there. We also do have design standards in the town center. However, we don't have a design review process that applies outside of the town center for subdivisions and even for multifamily-type developments. So really, what we'd be looking for is feedback as to where you would want to see that apply, and what the, who would be doing the design review? Would it be administrative city decision, or would it be some sort of, excuse me, would it be some sort of pointed body that would do... it be some sort of pointed body that would do the design review, like is done in some other cities?
Okay, so that would come back to us at a later time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other further comments or questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, sorry, just really quick, David. So, on, going back to the, you know, the green building codes and some of the sustainability efforts, I know that other cities are working on this as part of their comp plan updates. How much can we leverage what some other cities are doing, or piggyback on top of that, so that it's not as heavy of a lift? I just, again, I can't help but go back to the, the delay in doing that, and the things that we build that don't have that built in. We live with that for, for decades. And while it can increase the cost of housing, it also reduces the total cost of ownership or the total cost to live places when they're built green, because utility bills are frighteningly high. So, the payback period on some of those things is actually rather short. So, I'm, I just want to know if there's something we can do to try to help leverage work that's happening across King County and other cities, especially our neighboring cities, where they're going to have to work with master builders and stuff as well. So, can we join forces there?
So, the, the natural evolution of development of a green building program typically follows having some sort of climate action plan or climate change elements already established in the Comprehensive Plan, so that you have your policy direction, and that you can then pursue development of regulations. Consistent with the question that was asked tonight of potential council candidates, what is the relationship between the Comprehensive Plan and the municipal code? The first thing we need to do is to set our policy direction, which will then allow us to pursue development of regulations to implement the, the policy.
Okay. All right, I'm not giving up on this.
That's fair. All right, is there anything else? Cool. We look forward to when you come back.
One, one thing that we could do is price out what it would cost us to pick up a green building code, if the council wanted to take that on as part of the budget process that would take place in the, the last, so if we broke out the comp plan update and development regs process, we were bringing that graphic back up. I don't know if you have that available, Evan. What we would be looking at is that, that final half of '24, we would be pulling in a green building program, potentially. So, what we would look at is an accelerated development of green building program, and possibly there's something on the shelf already that we could take and run with. But we would pull it in, right in that, that development regulations drafting and legislative review, the tail end of that, because then we would have policy direction already set, and we could look at that. So, we'll work with our consultant to see what that would, what that would entail, and what they think about other off-the-shelf options that could be rolled in, if that's something that the, the council, I'm seeing nods, would want us to add to the budget as, as an option.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you so much. Cool.
Sure.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so, last council reports. Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Tomorrow, I have a SCA Public Issues Committee. There are two action items. The first one is Regional Committee Appointments. There are four people noted. One of them is Karen Howe, to fill the vacant SCA position for King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee. So, I'm seeking council approval on that one, for me to vote in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next one is adopting the SCA Clean Water Planning Guiding Principles. In a nutshell, the principle is to inform the creation of a plan for the wastewater treatment division on how to prioritize which wastewater action to do in the next 40 years, and seeking approval for me to vote yes on that?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the last one is just a discussion topic on the 988 crisis system. Instead of the long number that they have for the National Suicide Prevention Line, it will be shortened to 988. And I reached out to Rita Ba on our, on staff, to find out what the city is doing to support mental health, and so I'll be, I have a list from her, and I'll be going in to share that information at the meeting tomorrow.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, interim city manager?
Did you, Kaylee, didn't you have three items for EFER? This isn't that later this week?
Yeah, I sent them to people, if you would like to give me a head nod on that, but it doesn't look like any has any financial impacts.
So, for the new council members who don't have email?
Yeah. Do you want to go first, Scott, and then I can pull this back up?
Sure, just a quick, we are utilizing the city manager's report for this one. This has to do with the Arch Affordable Housing Revenue Focus Group, and they've asked for a couple of participants from the city council, and I'm going to turn this over to David quickly, as he is more versed on this, but we're looking for some, a couple people to volunteer for this, so, David?
Sure, thank you, Scott. So, we had a request from Arch to identify two council members that could help with Arch-focused group that is looking at fixed revenue sources for affordable housing. And they were very clear that they wanted all different angles, so, you know, whether you're a staunch supporter, or whether you're, you're a supporter, or whether you're kind of on the fence about affordable housing, they said all, all, all different angles are welcome. I do know that, that Councilmember Howe is listed as the Arch liaison. However, that's complex, because there is actually no, it's a completely administrative relationship between Arch and the city. And so, that might be a good opportunity to work with other, other cities related to Arch business, and hopefully, over time, I know, I sent an email about that, that, that Arch would like to see that, that relationship grow with elected officials, however, they don't have it budgeted for support right now. So, if the council wanted to choose two members that could participate in an upcoming focus group, they'll be sending out a doodle to those individuals to pick a time in the end of July, possibly early August at this point, when they would be holding those, that, that meeting.
Do we need nominations? Because I'll nominate Councilmember Howe. I can second that?
I think from the, from our staff perspective, I think Councilmember Howe, unless she turns it down as a bit of a shoe-in, I think it's a question of who might from council be joining her in that endeavor.
If no one else, I'll do it, but if there's someone else who really wants to, I will cede that seat to them. Anyone? No, no, I'm, I'm literally...
Councilmember Trine? Lamb, is anyone else interested?
I'm out.
You're out? Okay.
Not available.
Deputy Mayor?
No, I'm literally like the backup, so... You want it? All right, it's yours?
All right. Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you.
Cool, yeah. Anything else? Okay, quickly, so, Eastside Fire and Rescue, we're going to be appointing a vice chair, because it was previously held by Councilmember Moran. We're approving a contract with Woodinville Police Department for Integrated Social Health Services, so it's part of a core function, and I can send you guys stuff. And then Battalion Chief Collective Bargaining Agreement that needs to be backdated to January 1, 2021, and it'll go through 2026. And then the letter of agreement for minimum staffing requirements, which I believe the chief said has no impact, because they've already accounted for it, I believe. Cool. So, that's all on Thursday, and we do need to fill that vacancy at some point that we have, so. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second?
All right, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, 7-0. That's awesome. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.